Is it on? Oh, there we are on speaker. Good. Good evening. We are now going to start our study session and we're going to have a couple of presentations on capital bond and levies. And then we're going to have a board discussion and questions and have a thorough chat about all the information presented tonight. So Dr. Reed, would you like to take it from here?
Thanks, President. Thank you.
Green.
Thank you, President Swain. Appreciate it. And tonight is an important night. There's a lot of content we need to cover and in a really thoughtful way. So we have, we'll start with several presentations. And then really, the bulk of the study session is for the board to have a conversation about the three ballot initiatives or potential ballot initiatives and be able to begin to sort of coalesce around some ideas and some clarity that we can move forward with because our intended timeline, just want to remind us is to have a first reading of the resolution at our next board meeting, which would be September 27th, and a second reading for our first October meeting of a board resolution or a ballot resolution. And that would have put us two weeks ahead of our schedule in 2018. So we do have a little room to spare, but we'd really like to kind of get there tonight. So following the three presentations, which I would encourage board members to ask questions, we have a, of each of those, probably actually four brief presentations. Then I know Director Cast was going to facilitate the board conversation so we can really efficiently and thoughtfully synthesize this information because it's a lot to cover, honestly. So we're going to start with Mark Pressing and his sort of budget and bond budget 101. And he will then be followed. I'll introduce our next presenter as soon as Mark's done. So, Mark, why don't you go ahead and start, please?
Great. Thank you, President Swain. Dr. Reed, members of the board, happy to be here with you this evening. So my name is Mark Pressing. I work with Educational Services District 112, and we serve as the district's financial advisor. And what that really means is we are an extension of the district staff with expertise in the bond world and capital facilities funding. So I'm here to hopefully be able to answer questions you may have, just to not do a formal presentation to you and just kind of be available for questions more than that. We work closely with your underwriting team, Piper Sandler, led by Trevor Carlson, to come up with the different scenarios. So Dr. Reed has asked that I be brief in the presentation, so I'm going to err on that side with the idea that we could explore the questions that are important to you. We've run a lot of different scenarios on different bond amounts and what that means for taxpayers. For North Shore School District is really quite fortunate because of prior planning, starting from years ago in 2018, that we, you have the ability to ask for an additional authorization for district funding, whether that be capital, technology, operating, you're limited on the operating, without necessarily an increase to taxpayers. Most districts, when you're considering a new bond issue, you're going to ask for an amount, and we say, here's what it's going to cost, and they vote on that increase. Well, we built into the district's tax rate structure a drop in the bond tax rate of about 60 cents per thousand as part of the last authorization sale, knowing this was coming. So I think from the board's perspective, it might be helpful to kind of divide this down into really two different distinct decisions, rather than here's what it costs in dollars and here's what it costs for tax rate, kind of disconnect that and say, really what we're looking at is what do you have as priorities for funding this time around, this four-year cycle? And then as a separate decision, what are the direction you have for your finance team for the tax rate structure, both now and going forward, help four years from now? And so I think of those two things as different. So try to make a disconnect between a $400 million bond issue would be this amount per thousand and a 475 investment. It's really, because you have room in that 60 cents per thousand to fund, if you want to say, let's go to the maximum, it'd be $700 million plus. And the direction I've been hearing is you're not necessarily thinking of that large of an authorization at this point. So I think it really comes down to what, what are your priorities for funding? And what do you think you, as a board, want to recommend to the taxpayers for approval to support your schools appropriately this time around? So again, I'd rather not run through all the scenarios necessarily, but you can see from these graphs, the numbers are kind of small. This is a, just an example of a $400 million bond issue. The top graph being, well, what would be the minimum tax rate that we could say that it would cost? The current tax rate for the district on a total basis is $3.63 per thousand. Next year, just because of assessed value growth, we're going to expect to go down about 3.55 if you have a moderate growth in assessed value. So we could actually reduce the tax rate and say if the minimum possible would be about 3.32. I'd say most districts aren't going to want to do that because that takes away your future capacity to fund the next time around. The lower graph is what we've been using as assumption. And the reason that that can work is bonds are a little bit different than home mortgages, and we can set your payment amounts per year to be what you would like it to be and what we'd like it to be. So, for example, after the authorization passed the last time around, we kept evaluating what are the funding goals going forward? And how do we use the bond component to help meet those, those goals? So we use the bonds really strategically to kind of help do that. So I guess that's the, the main thing is I think the plan to this point has been to keep the tax rates stable over a long period of time. And that way taxpayers know what to expect. And then you, as a board, decide kind of what you're going to fund along those projects. So again, I could run through these scenarios. They look very similar, but you'll see actually from, this is a $400 million option, the bottom graph at 3.55, 4.75 is still 3.55. It's just what, the only difference in those is you're using up more of the step this time around than next time around. So again, it's kind of a question of what do you want to fund this time versus ask for four, four years from now? So it's a very good position to be in. Most districts aren't in that position. Most districts, when you ask for an additional request, it's going to be additional dollars per thousand. So I threw a graph in here of the district's assessed value. We often get questions about what the tax rates mean. If we keep them stable, my home value goes up, my taxes are going to go up. The district's 10-year average growth is 6.81% annually. That includes some down years, includes some big years of growth in 2018 and 19. Those years actually result from some little-known thing called the McCleary decision, where county assessors are essentially kind of forced to bring all assessed values up to close to market value, where many of them were kind of, you know, a little bit under, and we kind of got used to that. But we wouldn't expect you're going to see, you know, 12%, 14% growth. But I think this picture is going to be a strong growth here. The, the bottom line is if we had, there's a lot of numbers here, I'll summarize it, I guess, briefly, that we can either say we're going to have a level tax rate if we're using an assumption of 4% growth for structuring our bond issue, meaning we're thinking 4% new growth to spread that larger payment over a broader tax base, more than spread it over more money over the existing tax base. And that's one of our calculation assumptions. And, you know, we can definitely change. But that would mean that, you know, existing property is going to about 3% per year. So if we had set a 3.55 tax rate and we get the 4% growth, well, it might, it might add $6 or $7 per month to the, to a $750,000 home. If contrast down below, we say, well, let's make the tax amount be the same, then the tax rate would decline over time. Again, I think most districts go for the level tax rate, and then we monitor that, again, during the bond sale process. So if you have a large authorization like this, we sell the bonds in multiple series, and we evaluate it with every series. Is that still the goal? Or do we want to bring it up? Or, you know, what do we want to do with that? So this isn't a static decision, but from your perspective, it is really getting kind of what you want to fund and what direction you want to have for us for structuring your tax for the short term and long term, so that we can meet the expectations next time around. So that's the, kind of the short version of the presentation, I guess. And again, I think this is a work study session, so more of a conversation than a, than a presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions now. And of course, I'll be here to answer any questions that come up along the way as well. Do they have any questions right now?
I had a question. You mentioned determining a tax rate in the now affects the future availability. Could you just clarify if that, if you made that statement, meaning that if we kept tax rates the same, though, just fewer dollars into the future?
Sure. If you think about this graph, let's just look at this bottom graph here. You'll see that we're, have a 3.55 tax rate kind of going forward, and it drops down to $3.12 per thousand. That's where you're going to be having this conversation four years from now, about what are we going to do then? And so we kind of build that drop in. Typically, because we're conservative in our planning, that drop ends up being more than we're planning now. That's our goal, is to tell, you know, taxpayers what to expect and, you know, do better than that. Where, so it goes to 3.12. The next one goes from 3.55 to 3.28. So it doesn't drop quite as much because you're asking for more now. So if you think about, you've got a pot of funding that you can do, well, the more you ask for now, the less room you have later. But again, we try to be really conservative in our projections. So I think that even the last time around, we'd have more room this time than we would have thought last time. Did that answer your question? Was that?
It does. So if I'm understanding this correctly, so that dropped to 3.28 in four years from now, that would still be room for another bond in four years?
Yes, substantial amount, another substantial amount of bond funding.
Thank you.
And that's why I said it's really kind of a decision, what you ask for now versus four years from now. And I hope that kind of clarifies what maybe priorities, because it isn't, you're not going to ask for much, really when.
Okay, I'm going to follow up on that. I want to make sure not only I understand, but our viewers understand what we're talking about. So the, the reason we focus on rates is because that's what the county requires, the state requires in our voter measure.
Not really on bonds. They do on, on the operating levies.
Right.
But not on, not on the bonds. We focus on rates mainly because every property value is different, and it's a way for people to kind of calculate their own. And we can make calculators that people can use that. You know, there was a time when the last recession, before the great recession, I guess, when all the property values went way down, well, the tax rates went way up consequently. And so then we kind of started talking about, well, here's what we told you in dollar amounts, we thought you'd be paying, and you're still paying the same thing, even though you see these larger rates. But so rates have just been a way to try to communicate that. But, but on the bonds, you do not put a rate on the ballot, but in the voter communication tools, you'll probably have some rate information there.
Right. Okay. I just, I wanted to explain why we focus so heavily on rates, because it is a dollar amount that we ask for.
Correct.
In the levy and the bonds. And so that's why, as a taxpayer, you will see that if your house value goes down, you're still paying the same amount of money. And if the value of the house goes up, you still pay the same amount of money.
That's, that's our goal, is to try to make that, you know, manageable, you know, so that somebody doesn't knock on your door and say, well, you told us this is going to be, why isn't it that?
Right. Okay. So that's, I wanted to clarify that. And then I just want to make sure I really understand the point that you're making there. So what you're saying is that if we ask for something that keeps the rate the same, what that does is does not jar our voters in four years.
Right.
We were to do a big jump then.
Correct.
If the rate was, okay.
If you let it drop down now, then it'll come back up. And then you'll be asking for a tax rate increase. Whereas now, your message can be, this was part of a long-term facilities plan and funding plan, that, you know, you continue on the plan that we've been on, and it won't cost you any more than you're experiencing today. That's, you know, again, a very enviable message to have, to be able to deliver.
Thank you.
It might be, thank you so much. I'm, I'm, you know, just hitting home to me just how much I do not understand about how bonds and the rates are structured. But the impression that I had gotten, which I think is what the, the graph is saying, is that we are adding bonds in sort of an additive fashion. So we have certain bonds, they're issued, and we're paying them back. They're not completely paid off when we need to go through the next cycle, so we're adding on top of that. And so, and jump in and correct me or stop me if I'm wrong.
That's absolutely correct. We structured in your bond payments so that the payments drop. I mean, you know, we'd all like to do that in our home mortgage, say, you know, I think I'd like a new car four years from now. Could I make my payment go down? Well, maybe not. In bond, the bond world, we can do that.
Okay. And so we, we issue X number of bonds at this rate that we've specified. And over time, the district is paying that off, paying it back, so that, you know, when the next cycle comes around, we have room within that rate to then add another bond?
That's it.
Is that right?
Or, or, you know, capital technology levies, we've been looking at that, you know, technology or layering in a capital levy potentially. So there are a lot of options. If the state were to change the operating levy formula, Kent School District, for example, they were able to ask for a little bit more. So we were able to bring the bond component down, so their, their total rate would be what voters would expect. Now, that came at a cost that their ability to fund additional future projects is lower than it would have been otherwise. That's the trade-off, is those components.
Just, just, you know, to throw it out there, I think, you know, we don't necessarily want to talk about the absolute amounts, but rather the, the rate. But I think it is an important piece of information for our audience and for our taxpayers, you know, what is this going to mean to my bottom line for this year? If it's $25, $50, $75 per year extra, that's, that's one thing versus talking about a, a total amount for it. You know, we're not increasing anybody's bill by, you know, $2,000 or anything like that.
Correct. And we, you know, I'm not a communications specialist, but we definitely work with the district's communication staff to help, you know, with those messaging and make sure that we're describing the plan appropriately. So once we get the approval, we can execute on that plan and meet voters' expectations.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that was basically my question slash observation. So it's, it's about the difference between the top graph and the bottom is basically front-loading more payments.
Correct. Yep, that's exactly what it is.
That we can, we can control. And the communication thereof, I agree, is a separate question, because based off our experience, I think it is helpful to give. And that's why, that's great, our finance team gave us an example of a typical house in the district. And that was something that you showed a little bit before too, in terms of if we keep the rate the same, you know, what we're projecting it would be for growth, you know, next year, $9 and things like that. So I think a communications question is helpful, and I appreciate your point in the beginning, that talking about priorities and kind of a tax rate strategy or target is helpful. And then we can build communication around that. Thank you.
Any other questions on this presentation? Okay, I'll be here. So, you know, I usually think of my best question after a person's left room.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have more questions before the end of the evening, for sure.
All right. Thank you so much.
Dr. Reed, some of these are, I think, not presentations that we've seen. Will we have access to these as well as the previous? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
So Ellen, Midima is going to join us next to talk about the technology, potential technology levy. And also Executive Director Midima has provided a document really to be responsive to questions at a prior, your prior study session in terms of the educational outcomes and partnered with other staff on the leadership team to ascertain some of those benefits. So Ellen?
Sure. Thank you. Right. So as Dr. Reed mentioned, that the last time we got together, there were two questions about the technology levy. And I'll take those in sort of reverse order because the second question was a little bit simpler. I think Director Swain asked about the communities. We broke our, our requests into, or recommendation into three groups, right? If you remember, we had the, the baseline, which is essentially what we're doing now, what we've already committed to do, to keep doing that, what that came in at about 76 million. Then move into the desired projects, which the committee felt were, these were important things that we should be thinking about doing. That pushed us up to about 83. And then we had one project, Presentation System Classroom Cameras was the only one, about $900,000, pushing us to that $84 million level that was in the stretch category. And Director Swain asked about that piece. And I thought that I could, why that camera piece, especially in a time like this, was less desired. And if I could clarify that, two things. First of all, every teacher's device, every student's device that we deploy right now already has one camera built into it. And then during the pandemic, we deployed 1,100 of the little desktop movable cameras with a tripod to 1,100 classrooms around the district. So they have that camera also. This would be a third, third camera project, a little higher end, possibly mounted, a little bit more rigid. And as we talked to community members and to students in particular, and to teachers, they felt, some of them felt like, probably don't really need that. It's, maybe it's a little bit more, maybe there's some targeted rooms where you might want this. Kids and teachers felt there, not universally, but in some cases, a little bit of a dubious value, they thought, to that. They felt like, well, we've already got several cameras. I don't need this other one. So there were some folks who were excited to buy it, but it just fell into that last category for us. The bigger question, and the one that I wrote, the briefing up with help from several other people in the district, from Obadiah Dunham, from Amity Butler, Adra Davey, Nikki Smith, Kristi Clausen, Shelby Reynolds, and, oh, and Derek Tucci, all helped to contribute to the document, was talking about what are the educational outcomes of these technology expenditures. So you've got that document, and I'll just talk about some of the brief highlights. And I don't have a presentation. You guys know me well enough, I don't do PowerPoints very much. Like, I'm a 10-slide guy, and then I'm done. And I gave you 10 slides last time. So that's all you get. The educational outcomes, we talked about within that document, the high points where we talked about how of our four building blocks that we have, all four really tie to technology, the four building blocks of our strategic plan, right? We talk, in the building blocks, we talk about providing each student with a personalized using, user experience that matches their strengths and addresses their challenges. Well, I mean, to me, that's just technology. How are you going to do that in a classroom? How is a teacher going to do that with 30 different kids? Differentiate, track what's going on with the kid, customize a lesson to it. It's an impossible task without technology. And we saw that before we went to remote learning. We really saw it during remote learning, and we're seeing that extend now. And as we reached out to our special services folks and our, our instructional experts in elementary and secondary education, they speak to that within the document that you see. Building block two talks about connections with families. And again, really during remote learning, we saw this, right? As we rolled out Schoology, as we rolled out tools like Blackboard, as we rolled out all these different tools to communicate, connect with families easily and effectively, those are technology tools. And especially for our families who maybe English isn't their first language, have those on-the-fly translation tools that are just getting better and better and better with these services. Now, that's a technology tool, right? So us making that available to kids, us supporting families through different services that we've got, really helps us in those areas. Building block three is meaningful PD in a variety of modalities and timelines. And that's for, for staff and for students also. And again, these are things that we deliver and we bring to people with technology. I mean, some of the least effective teaching that we, or professional development we could do for a teacher would be the kind of inoculation training that we do in August, right? Here's three days. I mean, these are, these are good things that we do, but for me to say, here's three days of training on something you're going to need in April, is like the equivalent of not doing training at all, right? What we want to do is bring training to people right before they're going to use it, or give them the chance to come back and look at that training again, or have that chance to get some support and say, hey, I didn't get that piece. Well, we fund those things through our technology levy. We fund our instructional technology coordinators. We fund the professional development they do. We fund the, some of the support activities they do. And we even fund the ability, in some cases, for people to come to the teacher's classroom and work with them on, you know, something that's just not clicking, not working for me. That's a technology expenditure that we fund through tech levy also. And building block four is informed timely data. Well, that's, again, technology. It's not just the reading of the data, it's not just the management of the data, it's that collection of the data from the kids, right? If they're going to use something like iReady assessment, it doesn't do us a lot of good to have those assessments be on paper, where it's going to take somebody, if we're lucky, two weeks to coalesce it and get it back together. And then maybe a month later, someone's got it on their desk. We want something timely and right there, right now. Giving kids devices, having them do their formative, their summative, their, all their assessments along the way, just makes that available to teachers in a way that, you know, when I went to school, probably when youngsters like you went to school, even, probably didn't have nearly as much as, as they've got right now. So next piece that we talked about within the document I gave you was the equity component of this, right? How do we, how do we, within technology levy, how do we address issues of equity, not just related to the device, but access to materials, for access to remediation and enrichment for kids, and access to information for everybody across the board? Well, we do those things through technology. We address those, that equity component by bringing those things to families, to students, to teachers through technology. It's the big tool that we use for that. Within the document, we also talked a little bit about, well, what are the nuts and bolts? What are the things we provided? Well, 26,000 computers, right? North Shore School District for 18 months only existed in, within technology. I mean, that's one of the things that we were able to do and we were able to bring. We were able to give 2,000 hotspots, plus or minus, to kids. That's not a technology expenditure, I mean, excuse me, a tech levy-funded expenditure, but we did bring those things. You know, we took North Shore School District, and it stopped being buildings and started being, you know, kids' homes. And that's a thing we did through technology. Now, this year, we had brought, we had distributed 12,000 devices to kids last year. Well, this year, every kid's going to have a device. Kids, second grade through 12, are going to take them home with them every night. And then the kids in K-1, they'll have them at the location with them. And then for people who are doing the math, well, we got 23,000 kids, we got 26,000 devices. Well, you got to have some spares, you've got some specialized devices, you've got some, you know, some, some one-off kind of tools. A lot of CTE devices that really are focused on that classroom or, you know, that we wouldn't necessarily send home with a, send home with a kid. And the device, in the document, we also talk about support and professional development for classroom teachers and their families. 40,000 users within Schoology, right? So it wasn't just kids. It was kids, it was parents, it was teachers, it was community members. We had 40,000-plus people log into Schoology last year and use our learning management system. Those are people who are connecting together, who they wouldn't have connected together before. We had 3.5 million assignments created. We had 1.2 million assessments created through that tool. And it's not just that they were created in there, but now we can access those things, right? They're not lost to a piece of paper. In my filing cabinet, some of you know I taught math for 10 years, I've still got assignments in my filing cabinet, right? They are of no use to anybody, right? I mean, the math is still, is still valid, it's just they're hidden, right? Now they're not. Now we have assignments and assessments where people can get at them. Within the document, we also then talked about what are the special services groups specifically doing with the technology? What are we doing with core curriculum supplemental resources for kids? The supplemental resources is like a game changer, right? The idea that I could deliver these targeted assessments, lessons, things like this, that somebody has developed to direct at maybe three kids in a whole building. We couldn't do that before. We can do that, those kinds of things now. It makes sense. We can build lessons that we distribute across the whole district and assessments in the same way. It's a, it should be a game changer, I hope. We also, within that document that we shared, we talked about the remediation, the enrichment opportunities. The community of TAC members really stressed to us within our conversations, the, the professionals within our group, really stressed the need for presentation skills. They said that's one of the things that they wished and they had to develop when they got older was, how do I present my ideas and my thoughts in a modern, professional way? And you guys probably know this, the last time you use a trifold board is when you're in middle school, right? But that's the way we still, till recently, we're having kids present their ideas. That'll be a big blow to Bartels when we stop using those things, but that day is coming. And I think that's it for me. That's kind of summarized the doc that I had. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Ellen. Questions?
Just a comment, the last technology levy that we did in 2018, you know, with the one-on-one devices really proved its utility with COVID and having a transition to at-home learning. So I think it was really good foresight that we had at the last bond cycle with technology.
You know, it, it, it was not just the foresight, but the not-to-be-in-the-train-of-trying-to-get-computer-someplace-any-place-back-a-year-and-a-half-ago. The fact that we had those devices already, I mean, some of the lists of, of regional folks around me, just trying, like, where can I buy any computer from anybody at any cost? The fact that we didn't have to get into that was huge.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for this. I know that that was a concern of mine. And that's, for me, needs to be about the need.
Yeah.
Rather than how much money can we spend, right? So I really appreciate that. And it's funny, every time I see you, I keep harkening back to when we went to Apple many, many years.
That was a long time ago.
And, and somebody said, and it's And, and somebody said, and it's stuck with me ever since, that we don't want technology to be basically really expensive paper and pencils.
Exactly, yeah. And that SAMR model, that S level, right.
Right. So may, is there some things that you can think of, just real quick off the top of your head, that this would buy, that, that takes the technology from just a replacement of shock to really enhancing education?
Yeah, I mean, one of, excuse me, one of the, for me, one of the really inspiring pieces of, of use of technology that I can think of, that kids could work with that they couldn't do right now, is, is that ability to connect with their peers in real time on things. And when I say their peers, I don't mean their friends. I, I mean their, their peers, like, around the country and around different places, connecting with, with, with each other. So that's a thing that, that we do now through technology, that back when we made that run to Apple. I mean, it seems like a silly thing now, but it's like a game changer, I think, for kids now. So that's, that's one of the pieces that I think of. One of the other places, the other revolutionary sort of tools that I think, that again, is really simple. We had one of our, one of our kids in the TAC, one of the students in our TAC group, talk about being in his science class and being able to see what the heck is going on in the front of the room. Something as simple as, there's 30 of us in the room, there's an experiment going on in the front of the room, and if it wasn't for the presentation system, I would not be able to see what was happening in the front of the room. And we can say all we want, you know, everybody crowd around, or everybody get up front, even, you know, pre-COVID, we remember this, you couldn't see what was going on. So two presentation panels in the, in the room, this kid said, experiment would start, I would turn around and look, and it was like I was right on top of that experiment. And that's, you know, that's pretty simple technology, but for that kid in that room, it was the difference between 15 minutes of somebody describing for me what's happening, and me being able to look up on the screen, and I can see like I'm right on top of it, what's happening. And then the other piece that, that is done for us is then, I can capture and record that lesson. And so let's say, for whatever reason, I wasn't there today, or I forgot it, or it didn't make sense to me. I can go back and look at that thing later. Or I think today, we had a couple of kids, we didn't have a great solution for them, but some kids who were out sick, who immediately thought, well, I should be able to join something remotely today, right? And, I mean, that idea, it's, I mean, and I'm intentionally not talking about super-heavy, rich techni, or deep technology, it's just access to learning that kids can get, get access to. I mean, for me, one of the most revolutionary, game-changing technology things, and I know I've said this to you before, is classroom audio, right? Simple technology, not a gigantic deal, game changer for kids in the classroom. Kids who couldn't hear before, now can hear. So those are the kind of things I don't want us to lose sight of. What are like barrier things that we can remove with technology? I can't see, I can't hear, I can't be there. So we change those things with technology. You know, and then there's Elon Musk kind of stuff, too.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Director Cast?
Thank you for that, actually. That was, that was my question, is I, I don't want to necessarily, because we have lots to cover today, go down, you know, talking specifically about specific tools or solutions, but the idea around accessibility, and I mean that almost from a web design standpoint, right? Like, and also adaptive technology, because that's one of the line items. But in terms of how the TAC evaluated options and priorities around adaptive technology, I, I just would like a little bit more detail, because that's on the, the middle level.
It's on the desired, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, so that's a, that's actually, that was a really interesting discussion. I want to make sure I find that piece of it. Because as we decided we were going to break into those three groups, the, the what are we doing now piece of it, oh, let me make sure I find the right page before I go on, and the desired piece, and the stretch piece, oh, baseline, that's what we're calling it. There were some folks who really were pretty, they really wanted to move that adaptive stuff into the baseline. But the way that we had defined baseline is it's, this is what we're doing right now, sort of. It just didn't fit there. But we, again, from our community members who are, and one of the nice things about expanding the group the way we did, we had some community members who are pretty involved in some pretty interesting things within technology. And that's where they said, that's where technology is going, that's the things that we need to really start getting involved with, is how do we, how do we change the learning environment through technology for kids? And so they had that very high on the desired list, but because of the way we defined baseline, we said this has to either be something we are already doing, or something we've already committed to. It didn't fit within there. But otherwise, I think if we would have said for, and I'll get into your question, if we're getting into the, like, what's the thing you're most excited by? Then adaptive technologies definitely would have been in that group. And I agree, because people have heard me talk before, I talk about how do we make the class more student-centric? How do we make the, the class more, how do we waste kids' time less in the classroom? And I think the way we do that is through adaptive technologies. I don't know if you guys have ever used Khan Academy or something like that, where it does assessments as you go along, and says, this is where you need to go, here's where you need to learn, here's the next thing. Well, being able to do that in a classroom through technology and branch things out for kids, so as you start the year, maybe we're kind of all in the same place, but as we're six months into it, really nobody's on the same timeline anymore. You do that through adaptive technologies. You pick up what's every kid's different skill, what's their different challenge, and you kind of mold their instruction in a different way. Really changes the classroom, of course, for a teacher, right? Because I can't, I can't teach 30 kids in 30 different places, 30 different things about math simultaneously. Changes my role, I'm still necessary, but it's, I'm not standing up in the front of the classroom doing one lesson plan for the whole class every day like I used to do. Did that get at your question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Director Cast, for bringing that up. That, that addresses much of my, my questions about this, too. I, I think we probably all agree that the baseline, the things that we're already doing, that are already in place, we, we don't want to go backwards. We all see too clearly the, the benefits that we've derived from, from our technology. So the question was then, of the things on the next list, you know, how does that address moving the technology forward and moving our students forward so that we can make further progress on, on exactly that kind of thing? I think you've, you've answered that with the descriptions of adaptive technology, and, I mean, I, I can't go into detail, but if there's anything else in this list that you could expand upon with respect to how that's moving us forward.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say, the ones I would, I would target, as we get down through the, I'd say sort of lower priority, where we start talking about the support pieces, those getting into more of the support and the training for staff and for students and for families. Once we've purchased or implemented the systems, you know, how do we make sure that they're properly supported for folks also? And that became a prioritization based on, well, I can't really prioritize support for a system above implementing the system, because that just kind of logically doesn't make any sense, right? So that's why we structured them the way we do. There were folks that said, we really shouldn't tease those things apart. I would say the unfortunate reality of school districts, I'm not saying North Shore in particular, though we are not immune from this also, we implement systems a lot of time without supporting them very well. So it's not that we can't do it, because we definitely do that at times, but we probably shouldn't. We should probably consider implementation and support as a single package. But we don't always do that. Probably at your jobs, I'm sure they never make that mistake, though.
I agree completely. Thank you for that.
Okay.
I think we, we learned all too well, you know, the last year and a half, that we need to support not just the staff, but also our parents and the students with learning and/or troubleshooting on, on the way.
That was a, that was a huge game changer, wasn't it? When we sent things home to families and, and the wide disparities between what could a family manage at home without assistance, and what did they need assistance with, it was remarkable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alan, just a practical question, on the, with the 76 million as baseline, how much of that is just, you know, buying new computers to replace old computers?
Oh, yeah.
Software licensing? I know you put it in the previous presentation, but could you remind us?
Yeah, I think the, if I remember correctly, and I've actually got the document here, but I'll just, we'll see how close I come to it off the top of my head, is the, the computers, I think, is about a $20 million expenditure, just to roll that forward, and that's on a four-year replacement cycle. And, hey, that's pretty close, 20.4, that's pretty close. The software licensing is just about 14 million. Now, that's some, most of that is, or not, oh yeah, probably most of that is operational software, right? We've got to pay people, we've got to hire people, we've got our student information system, we've got transportation systems. A lot of that licensing is buried within that $14 million. And that's the one that goes up, that's the one that's all over the place, in fact, for growth. Some vendors increase each year by less than 1%. We've got some vendors who are pretty reliably are about 9, 9% to 10% each year that they kick theirs up, so. It's also a place where, as you modernize and streamline your systems, maybe you find savings in one place, you never find the savings in software, though, right? I mean, as I simplify this system over here, and maybe make field irrigation work better. And maybe I need fewer groundspeople to do that, but that becomes a software system that waters the field. So your technology expenditure goes up, but my cost elsewhere goes down, which is a real system that we have, right? We, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Okay, thank you.
Alan?
Yep.
All right, so next, our Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Patterson, is going to share some information on the EPNO levy potential. Tracy?
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Good evening, President's Wining Directors, Dr. Reed. Thank you again for the opportunity to further discuss our bond and levy information with you tonight. As I mentioned in our last study session, there are legal parameters surrounding the operating levy rates. The maximum dollar amount which may be levied for any school district for enrichment levies is equal to the lesser of the maximum of $2.50 per thousand dollars of assessed value of the property in the school district, or the maximum per pupil limit. The maximum per pupil limit is established by using the prior year's annual average FTE multiplied by the maximum per pupil amount that OSPI calculates. OSPI calculates the maximum limit using the annual change in the Consumer Price Index. The original amount per student was established in 2019, and is effective in 2020. And in 2022, it will be an amount of $2,663 per student. So what does the operation levy support? So thanks to the support of the North Shore taxpayers, we've been able to provide services to students and families, to support them equitably, provide a robust academic experience, and to prepare them for a successful future, whatever that may be. So the levy supports important areas, special education, above state funding, as of August 31st, 20, 2020. The levy supported 17.7 million, or nearly 20% of services provided. Basic education needs it supports that aren't funded by the state and federal government, to include nurses, mental health services, et cetera, and the enrichment and extracurricular and co-curricular activities, including, excuse me, this mask is hard to breathe, sorry. Co-curricular activities, including music, drama, sports, and clubs. So I handed out a piece of paper there, a graphic, that I found on the OSPI website. And there was an interest expressed last meeting on the history of education funding in Washington State. And the graphic really shows from 1977 through 2019, 20, and it's, I referenced from OSPI. A modern education funding began in 1976, when the Seattle School District sued the state. At that time, 65% or 65 districts, or 40% of the student population, each recently had levies fail twice in a row. And so the state's Supreme Court agreed the funding system in place was an ample or stable. The graphic illustrates the Basic Education Act was enacted in 1977, when the levy lid was capped at 10%, to 1999, when the McLeary versus State of Washington was filed, through 2019, 20, when Senate Bill 5313 established a new school district levy lid capped at the lesser of 2,500 per student, or $2.50, or $2.50 per thousand of assessed property value. So I provided you each a copy of the graphic, and I think we're going to be posting on our website as well. Now, we've looked at the maximum levy rate for North Shore, and it's calculated with a tool that OSPI provides, and it's based on enrollment, prior year enrollment, and then it's multiplied time the per pupil maximum, okay? And so we have to have either that as a threshold, or the 25, we have the 2,500 or 2,600 per student, or we have the, we have the maximum amount of the $2.50 per thousand of AV, whichever is less. Okay, so that's where we're at. So the maximum that we've calculated with the OSPI tool is $1.54 per thousand dollars of assessed value. And with that, I think Mark has talked about the levy and bond calculations. There was a question that was brought up on how those things were derived. I think Mark has explained that this evening. And again, he's going to be staying through the rest of the conversation, so that if he has further questions, that he can help with that.
Okay, just, just going to, so that it's completely obvious that the per pupil is the lesser of the two. So that's why we're using that.
Correct, yes.
And looks like about 60 million a year for our levy?
Right now, we're at 60 million, okay? And it's projected to go up. I don't have those figures in front of me. Mark, do you have them? Yes, and I think it goes up to like 62, 64, 66, and 70. Again, it's based on, on projected enrollment growth, and there's a calculation that OSPI provides.
Okay, so I just wanted, just kind of to make the point that it's 60 million. This year, we're projected to spend 21 million of that on special ed, I believe is what I said.
20%, roughly.
Third of our levy.
Correct.
We needed that, just to fulfill our federal law requirements.
We also, we also, you know, support our basic education and district-wide support as well with our levy funds.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just one more clarification. Because of the, the formula that's given to us by RCW, we have maximized what we can ask the voters for.
Correct.
So the conversation we're going to be having will be, I just want to note that before we dive into our conversations.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I think if I'm, if off the top of my head, if I recall correctly, the assessed value is significant, and you multiply that times the $2.50 per thousand, and it way is much, much higher, millions higher, so.
All right. Thanks, Tracy. Our next and last presentation, before you begin your facilitated conversation, is Executive Director Dree Ralph, with support from Director Don Mark and Paul Field, who's here to support the presentation of our Capitol team. So, Dree, it's all yours.
Thank you. Let me plug in here. Could you come help me, Ryan? I think this one got unplugged. This one?
Is there setting up, are there any framing thoughts you want folks to listen with, Director Cast?
I don't think so. I think we're kind of tackling them so far. I think, yeah, thanks.
All right. So happy to be here tonight. Uh, I kind of feel like we definitely saved the best for last, no offense to technology, but I know Alan's obsessed with the fact that we weren't in buildings the last year and a half, but buildings are very important. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone how excited you were first day of school, seeing students in buildings. So I'd just like to remind you of what we talked about last time. We had so many great participants with our capital bond planning task force. We have a couple of them here tonight. And this is really a conversation and discussion about what we talked about and the conclusions we came to. And in Mark's presentation, he really said, let's focus on your priorities. What are your priorities? And that is really the tack that we took for the whole, um, bond planning task force. In, um, past iterations, they have started with a number and put projects that reach that number. In this iteration, we started with kind of our most prioritized projects. So with that, um, after our last meeting, I heard kind of loud and clear from you all that you wanted a little bit more information about what do we get, basically? Like, as we're talking about these projects, what are we going to see at each of them? So that's what we're going to focus on tonight, and here we go. So our overall vision that we are, we'll talk about are these items. These are the key things that we looked at. The committee prioritized building conditions, that's building systems, and that's also outdoor learning. They talked about how to reduce portables and, um, talk about growth and then talk, um, how to improve health and safety. A few other things that I just want to keep in mind when we are talking about these guiding principles is you see the building con- conditions, you see, um, the reduce of portables, but you also see, if you look down here at the bottom, uh, support projects for students furthest from educational justice. So we really wanted to look at our projects with that equity lens that, um, Alan did such a great job talking about earlier. So you've seen this slide a couple of times before, but I have a few little annotations on it this time. In previous bonds, we've had growth projects that really had to deal with the explosive growth. So we would have two, three really large projects. The committee took a different tack this time, which was basically spread large projects throughout the district, look at those items that we talked about and then focus on the buildings that we currently have and bring them up to a higher standard than they currently are. Not that they haven't been well maintained, but just that, um, the students throughout the district get a great experience when they're at school. So you'll see the notes on these seven projects, which are the large projects that they've proposed. And you can see that there are some of our oldest schools. You can see that there are ones who might be furthest from students, uh, from educational justice. We looked at reduced, um, lunch fees, et cetera, to look at that. We looked at other demographic information, uh, to come up with these projects. So last time we came to you with this three hundred and seventy-five million dollar consideration. Again, we did not start with a number. And you all asked this question, you're like, well, what if we just put one more school in there with Fernwood? So tonight you will see, um, what that will look like with the one more school. And the colors of this chart reflect these kind of priorities, projects. So you see a lot of growth and modernization projects. You see even more in this four hundred because Fernwood turns into one of those. Uh, and what that growth and modernization is, and we'll go through and talk about the seven projects, but you'll see that we add capacity at the school, but we'll also do some modernization of the existing building. So we presented the option of doing whole school, like tear down rebuilds. The committee wholeheartedly decided to do partial modernizations and additions as opposed to that. So again, we could touch more schools. And you can kind of see the spread of the projects across the district. So for each of these projects, I have two slides. One is the needs list and then the next is kind of what we're looking to focus on at this site. So Inglemore and Leota were kind of number one priority from almost all the groups. We had a lot more discussion on which elementary schools rose into that list. But Inglemore and Leota were definitely, um, priorities for the, for the task force. It's our by far most aged, um, high school. We have had a great, uh, project we're just in the middle of, uh, that should be ready in the beginning of the year with the concert hall. And it really starts this idea of replacing this campus in a phased way. And unlike some of the elementary schools, both Leota and Inglemore, the task force talked about being phased replacements. So for this first phase, we would expect to plan the future phases for total replacement. With the elementary schools, you'll notice it's a little different. We'll do a master look at the campus so that we can see where future additions could be, but it's not necessarily to do those before, we might look at other elementary schools in a partial way as well. So that's kind of the difference. So, proposed improvements. There's a couple of things that I want to draw attention to here. The biggest one for me as a facilities person is the modernizing of the HVAC system. So we have, I know, everyone's excited. Dr. Reed just gave me a look.
It was a look of excitement.
Yes, so we have a thirty-year-old boiler plant at Inglemore that really needs to be replaced. So you'll see here that we have, um, a classroom, a building that we're anticipating and part of the location of that is because we need to deal with this boiler. And we need to deal with it for a couple of reasons. Not only is it aging, but it's a seventeen million dollar project on its own. So that's, you know, a substantial part of this overall project. But it also, the state passed a law that requires buildings of fifty thousand square feet or more to hit certain environmental standards and energy consumption standards. Several of the buildings at Inglemore don't meet that standard. So this is one way for us to dress and, to address an unfunded mandate while taking care of an aging facility and really bringing some parity to the experiences that our high school students have. Leota, in some ways, this is a similar conversation. Uh, both of these schools, we would expect to remove their portables. Um, it's really a functional performance at this school and a real increase in the gym capacity is one of the things this, uh, building struggles with. So there are improvements, similar. You can see that we're looking to remove seven portables at the site, add up to twelve new classrooms. So you'll see in almost all these projects, we have a little bit of a net add. So instead of doing one new school, we're doing a little net add at multiple, multiple sites. On to the elementary schools. Kenmore Elementary, our oldest school in our district. It has some serious problems when it comes to its washrooms. I don't know if you've been to, um, Kenmore, but they're, um, they don't have a lot of washrooms and they're hard, they're away. They're hard to supervise. There's a need for additional common space. And then there's some real functionality issues throughout the school. So as you look at this one, you'll see we have like hashed or aligned in some of the existing classroom buildings. And that indicates that we'll be doing modernization in the building. And then the blue dot is the area for an addition. And then the other thing that Kenmore L really needs is an inclusive playground. And that inclusive play piece, we have wrapped into all of the elementary school projects. So by doing several, we're really moving the needle when it comes to having inclusive play at all of our elementaries. Crystal Springs, they need more classrooms. They also have a lot of portables, you see those marked with P's. They have some site circulation issues here, as many of you are familiar with. So that would need to be part of their, um, project, potentially adding parking. So again, these are rough ideas of where we could add space on the campus. You see that we have removing ten portables from this site. We're looking to add approximately twelve new portable, or twelve new permanent classrooms and then looking at a new gym and commons.
Dree, real quick, that wooded area, is that all usable or is it some of that white lines or?
We'll do more exploration, but we think that a lot of it is usable.
Okay.
We've only got to a certain level of exploration at all these sites, but we do believe that it is there. Yeah.
Just for, for my clarification, looking at the illustrations that you have here in the second ones like this where you've put the spots sort of on top of existing buildings, is that indicating the demolition of the building that is there with this new feature added in afterward?
That's exactly right, and you'll see that we have in the, under addressed district growth and reduced portables. It has a little minus sign, which says remove up to ten portables or, um, sometimes it has the remove the number of classrooms. And I like that you called them blobs because that is what they are supposed to be. We have not decided exactly what these look like, these are just conceptual ideas. So Maywood Hills is by far the most difficult site we've chosen of all of our sites. In part, we did it to ourselves. Um, I don't know if you've been out there, but we just installed a brand new field, which is great, it looks awesome. But it can no longer be used as a construction laydown area. So we're going to have to work a little bit on this site. And there will be some additional costs. You see the rest of these partial replacement modernizations, we're estimating to be right around thirty million. This one's at thirty-seven because of the, they'll just be added demolition with this site. Fernwood, this is the one that was added by the board, no, just kidding. It was the next in the priority list, so we added it in to look at. This one, unlike the other ones that have really, really significant condition things that we'll be looking at, this one has a lot of portables, a lot of portables. It has seventeen classroom portables, one bathroom portable. So on this site, we would really expect to add capacity in the form of a new classroom wing, but it wouldn't be as much modernization as we see at other sites. We'd really be focusing on adding capacity. And you'll see that we are not adding a lot more capacity than they currently have with the portables. And the reason for that is that would turn Fernwood into a giant elementary. Like, it already is, I don't remember their exact enrollment, but it's substantial. So at some level, you have to say that would be too large of an elementary school. And then finally, we have Sorenson, we've heard a little bit about this today. This is a twelve million dollar, um, project, we're looking to add, simply add capacity. Uh, Dorian Milburn is exceptionally happy with her space, loves her space, just wants more of it. So we, especially the inclusive play, I think at this site is imperative. Can remove a couple of portables, add eight classrooms to the space. We might have to look at port, at parking. This site requires more staff than other sites because of the ratios of students to caregivers and teachers. So as you look at the spread of projects, this is three hundred and seventy-five million. We'll go to the four hundred because it turns Fernwood a different color. But these really look at, you'll see the blue project are those modernization projects. The orange ones are building improvement projects, so these would be HVAC systems, roofs, et cetera. Uh, then you have some fields and outdoor learning projects. Technology is basically at all the schools. Safety is basically at all the schools. These are a list of a few of those building improvement projects that we're anticipating. It's not full list, but it gives you an idea. So this one, I know you're all dying for this slide, this does the math for us. So we're looking to add classroom space, six early learning classrooms, eight elementary, five middle, ten high school, and reduce the portables by the list below. So that reduces our overall portable count by sixty-four out of two, one hundred and seventy-two. So this would be about a thirty-eight percent reduction in portables, which is pretty significant for our district. This just goes through kind of the percentages. You can see that when we go to that four hundred and add Fernwood, we, that growth slash, um, building condition new project really increases. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we came up with our numbers. These again are goals. So what we did is we did that based, basically on square footage prices. So we took the current price, we escalated it to the million, to the middle of the bond, so twenty twenty-four, and we used a five percent escalation number. So you're looking at, um, construction costs. We started at five hundred for elementary school, five fifty for middle school, six hundred for high school. And then we added this, we call them soft costs in the construction world. So that's all your permitting, your design, your FF and E, all of that stuff. So that puts it up to about seven fifteen for elementary schools, seven eighty-five for middle and eight hundred and sixty for high schools. And that's how we came up with that thirty million or et cetera, unless we had a site like Maywood that we know has some kind of extraordinary, uh, needs that will cost more. So I believe that is it. Again, I also feel bad, I come up here and spew a lot of information at you, so please feel free to ask questions.
It's a good day for a lot of information, Dree, it's all good. Can I ask you, this wasn't something we discussed last time, but, um, I'd just love to get your thoughts on how, um, the task force processed, um, capacity at middle school. Because when we did this four years ago, we had anticipated more growth in middle school grades than we have seen and that Les Kendrick has, is predicting now. And so I'm just wondering, you know, we have, of course, again, lots of information to go through, but I just would love to hear about the conversations and how that was processed by the task force.
So trying to decide how to say this best. We had a lot of participants who were parents who were going to schools in the district. I think there is an overall sense about the need to bring current district facilities in more aligned, so there's not such a huge disparity between our brand new Ruby Bridges and all the other schools. So I think with that as kind of an underlying mindset, and then when you look at the Les Kendrick data that suggests middle school, the growth isn't as explosive as it has been in the past. It, I think it was easy for the task force to focus more on our existing buildings. And in some ways, I think they see this as an opportunity, a moment, right? We talked a lot about COVID and how this is just an odd time and we'll likely see explosive growth again. So this is a chance to use this bond to really focus on existing infrastructure and not chase that growth that we have in some of the other earlier bonds. That said, when we do look at the growth information, there will be a need for a school in the north end. I think if you look at the demographic data, you might say that middle school might not be needed. But you could also easily say, maybe that should be a K8, right? Then, because you can look at needs on the elementary school. So I think there's ways that you could look at that in a more, in a bigger way. And that was talked about a little bit more. And this goes back to the Fernwood discussion we just had, right? We have a lot of growth in that north area, especially in that elementary school grade band. So how are we handling that growth? So.
I see what you're saying.
I don't know if that 100% answered your question.
Oh, no, it does. It does. Yeah, because that's, you know, I'm sure that's probably something we'll be chatting about, so that's helpful. Thank you.
You bet.
Question I'm not sure you can answer off the top, but.
I love that comment.
The, it's just so amazing to think about being able to retire 64 portables. But also a little daunting to think of how many portables we do have left. Once those 64 are gone, do we know how many of the remaining portables are actually used for classrooms as opposed to other functions on campus?
So one of the beautiful things that has happened since Dawn joined our team is she's been like on portable central. So I don't have that number for you tonight, but I, Dawn does have it. She has done a report for me on it. And I can certainly get it for you. As you all know, portables are important. We can't not have portables. They allow us to have fluctuations in growth at different places. Dawn has done a lot of work about how we can rethink portables a little bit. Potentially go to a portable that will last longer, that will be more environmentally friendly, and that is actually portable. So if we need to take it down, we can move it somewhere. So a little bit more in the line of modular construction as opposed to buying the exact same portables that we've been buying for a long time. So I'm happy to get that information to you all.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So I will build, I just, I'm really wrestling with Fernwood and why we still need all 17 of those portables. I know they were at 1,000 kids before we built Ruby Bridges. They're now down to 800. What is happening at Fernwood that we still need all 17 of those portables?
I'm sorry, I'm not an expert at Fernwood.
Okay, I just would like, because the, even the proposed change has it replacing it with a two-story building. And I, that was the argument for Ruby Bridges was to reduce the population and the need for the portables. So I'm kind of stuck there. I, so I have two other questions. I really like the idea of adding a few classrooms per school. I think that makes a lot of sense. It definitely gets to our, our facilities policy part about minimizing our carbon footprint and keeping our long-term energy costs down. You're just adding a couple rather than a whole building. It also keeps our general operating costs down. Every time you add a school, our operating costs go up significantly. So I think that's a really good add and forward-thinking plan. I'm, just to have a question. Inglemore in particular is just a, there's no way to get from one classroom to another without going outside. Unlike our other, well, pretty much all of our others high schools, you could for many of your classes stay within the same building.
Yeah.
Is there thinking about, and I know that's also a safety as well as just weather issue. Is there some talk about Inglemore about maybe enclosing it a little bit more?
Yeah, 100%. One of the criteria that we looked at for all the projects was safety. Several of these elementary schools, similar, they have portables are right at the front of the school and block site, et cetera. But you're absolutely right. As far as the high schools go, that is definitely something we'll look at. Inglemore is a very difficult site. I really know it very well at this point. So that's one of the reasons why we're proposing that we do the whole design in this first phase. Because we need to address the boilers. So we have to do that. But we need to find out how to do that best while making the future phases possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my last question, you talked about specifically in Inglemore, there's some buildings that are not basically up to code in terms of energy usage.
Yep.
Is there talk about going better than the state bare minimum district-wide in some of this work? Have we talked about what are some things that we can do to improve, to reduce our carbon footprint, to lower energy costs?
100%. This is a personal passion of mine, along with being, I know a very deep-rooted value that you as a board hold. So that will be kind of foremost in our design and thinking process. Buildings do impact the environment in a very large way. And we want to do everything that we can to minimize our impact.
Another, another question that I don't know how answerable it is, or you are you, so maybe you do. With respect to the HVAC replacement at Inglemore, it occurs to me we have some very old buildings, not all of which will be replaced near term, and the HVAC has to be a higher priority. Is there, are there any issues with respect to, I guess, coordination and timing and how well the, a new HVAC will integrate with our older buildings and then have to reintegrate into the new buildings?
Yep, it's going to be tricky.
Good answer.
That site is going to be tricky no matter what. Especially that site occupied, which we're committed to doing this in a way that it can stay occupied. So I love giving engineers a good problem. And that will be one. Yes, exactly.
And then just one other thing, and I think we discussed it at some length the last time, and I think we'll probably get into it again, but with respect to all of these projects and the different levels that have been proposed, what can we reasonably expect to be able to accomplish in a four-year period? And if we, if we wanted to add in everything, say go up to 500 million, whatever, would we really be able to get all of that in while school is going on?
Director McCordy, I am so glad you asked this question because this is going to allow me to talk about another subject that I love, which is alternative delivery methods. So it's true, we're doing a lot more projects this time. We will likely need to increase our capital staff a little bit, but we probably don't want to do a lot of that. So I will be working with, depending on the list you all finally come up with, I'll be working with a team. And I think it really makes sense for us, especially with some of our elementary school projects, to do them with a design-build methodology. So we've used GCCM for years. You guys are very familiar with that. Design-build is kind of the next step when it comes to that. It really speeds up the process. Basically, we hire a contractor. They have a, they team with an architect. And they come up with the design and start the construction process kind of by day one. And the University of Washington uses this methodology a lot. Our team is trained on how to do it. We will need to go back to CPARB and get our certification, but there should be no reason why we can't do that. So that's the plan.
Dre, the elementary schools we have here, you have, most of them, I think all of them, they have a possible area of, oh, you put like gym slash commons.
Yep.
Would that be lunchroom slash gym? Okay, thank you. So I thought, we know most of our, because we know almost our elementaries don't have a common lunchroom, so that would be a huge improvement.
We're using the building program from Ruby Bridges as the template. We might want to make some modifications to that, but that's kind of the baseline of the conversation we started with.
Thank you. More questions?
Could I ask one follow-up question? So in, in the proposal, there's, Inglemore's listed with a partial replacement at one level and then added improvements at another. But is this still part of a phased plan?
Yes.
Can you help me understand the phasing?
So we were trying to decide, like, you know, we didn't know where we're going to draw the line or what the number was. So the idea was Inglemore is a priority. So once we got past the 275 mark, which is the bond amount for the last bond, they really wanted to add another step for Inglemore in. It just gets us further. And, you know, as far as escalation goes, it allows us to do more sooner and less expensively than going out for another bond measure. It just gets us down the road further.
Is it anticipated it'd be two phases, three phases?
Likely two.
Likely two, with that added, the one and a half that we would be kind of doing?
Basically, this is one and a half.
Okay, okay, that helps.
Some of it is for the things that you've talked about, right? It's a tricky design problem. This is the one that we would probably start building last just because of how complicated the site will be. I already know about the stormwater. I can tell you too much.
Okay, I thought I was done, but something that just got said that, that was based on an assumption that cafeterias for elementary school were the, was the preferred way to go. And I will say as a parent, having had kids in both experiences, infinitely preferred to have it be a classroom rather than a cafeteria. Nothing else. We've saved so much money on lost lunchboxes, but in a large school, if you only have one space to eat lunch, kids are starting lunch at 10:00 in the morning and not finishing till 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. And so can you help me understand why, because as a parent, you're going to, it's going to take me a hard, a lot to convince me that that is a absolutely no thought, no-brainer best practice?
Yeah, I don't know that it's a no-brainer because we definitely heard different things from the principals that we interviewed. Some of them really like not having a lunchroom. But what everyone did like was having a commons that could hold the whole school. So even if they choose not to do lunch in a lunchroom, they still have a commons area. It was talked about, like everywhere, the size of their commons was talked about as a real need. And I don't think that's just for lunch. That's for all of the activities that they do. And our buildings are a community center, right? Like, this is a place where after-school hours our community uses. So having a gathering space that's sizable enough to hold more activity is definitely desired.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
I think we're good, Dre. So if you want to have a seat, and then Director Cast is going to facilitate a conversation. And I appreciate Bethany, you staying, and Alan, and Mark, Paul, Dawn, Tracy, and Dre. So as resources as necessary. And thanks again to our bond task force members for being here. So thanks. Okay, Director Cast.
All right, so so the thought here is just to break down this, a lot of, there's actually, it's one decision with three parts with a lot of detail underneath them, right? So just trying to help our discussion kind of move along so we can process all that, all the micro steps to get to the one big outcome. First of all, does anyone, like, do we need to stand or like take a break or anything? Because we might be sitting for a little bit while longer. How's everyone? Everyone doing good? Okay, cool. So next thought. Obviously, the three aspects of this have different criteria, different factors to them, and even different priorities. But do we want to start with a universal discussion to ground us in where we're thinking, if there's any top-of-mind needs, any top-of-mind concerns that we'd want to start with? Or we can just dive into processing the three topics? Is there a preference? We've talked, we've talked, we've talked about priorities and factors as we had the presentations. And that's why I'm like, okay, maybe we don't need a whole big universal conversation because we've already kind of started processing. We have our strategic plan. Sandy and I brought our policy binders, right? We have all our policies. So we can, we can use those as kind of our universal grounding if we need to turn back to something. How's that sound? But so then I think what we should do is talk about, kind of from simplest to most complicated, and talk about first about the EP and O levy. Okay, in terms, so it seems to me that has, you know, fewer data points to it, right? That the finances around it are even a bit simpler. So I'm thinking that what we can do is formulate initially where we're thinking as a board, is what we'd like to propose to the community in February. And I'm going to write it down, and we'll put it to the side. And then once we're done talking about all three, we'll see where they come together. And if we have to jigger, because we know the community, and we do actually think of this as a combined package. So if we have to jigger at the end, we will. But maybe we'll start with, we'll start with the EP and O, then we'll go to tech levy, and then we'll go to capital bond. Does that sound like a good process? Okay, so around the EP and O levy, I think it is good though in general to talk about priorities and the factors that go into it to help lead us to where, just like Mark started us with, like what's our priorities that are leading us to what we want to propose to the community? So to give us a second, and I'm, I'm thinking we'll start with me, we'll just go around if that's okay. And if people still need to pause and think, we can pass. So first of all, to me, this is the simplest one because it's, it's, we're already at where we're talking about just maintaining it going forward. It's so critical to what we do. It supports a third, a third of it goes to supporting our special education gap. It supports. It supports added programming in terms of the seventh-period day, free band and strings, or no-fee band and strings at elementary school, improved transportation, so we could move start times for our high schools, all our rich program offerings. To me, it's so critical, so because it is so foundational to our strategic plan, I'm very comfortable maintaining it where it is. So Director McCordy, do you want to shop, jump in?
I agree completely. I think you pretty, you've said it quite succinctly and thoroughly, that it is absolutely critical. I mean, without it, we, we are not funding special education to the level that we need to. And I, I fully support keeping it where it's at. I mean, we, we have limits with respect to what we can ask for, and since there's such a great difference between the, the two options, I think we should stay with where we are.
Thank you. Anything, Director Cohen?
Yeah, I'll just, just add, if stay where we are, that's the $1.54 per 100,000.
Yeah.
And that's the calculation, that is lesser of the two options that the state provides. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it took me a minute to process your initial question, so I'm going to answer that first.
Thank you.
That frames where I'm at. One part of it is that we did not have policy governance when we went through this process the last time, we were just at the beginning, and so we didn't have our parameters.
That's a good point.
And I really struggle with having a conversation of how much money we can spend versus what do we need. And so I've been using our parameters as the what do we need? And P8, our instructional programs, and what we require from our superintendent. It feels like if we're going to require this, then we should fund it, right? I know. It's shocking. Seriously, that is where my brain is at, that if this is something we're requiring, now that we've said this is what we require, this is, then that's the needs-based argument for these three. And for the EP and O, it does not fully fund basic ed, and we know that, because a third of it's going to special ed. But so many of these bullet points that we are asking are going to have to come out of this levy. And so that's why I think we need to continue at the rate we're at, at the maximum allowed, to fund our needs for our students in our district.
That was beautifully said. That was perfect. I mean, yeah, we can't ask for all this improvement and progress and without the money to put behind it, right? And so we've seen what it's been, we've been able to do just the last four years, it's been amazing, amazing work, and I think we want to, I think the community wants to see that continue, so. And we are restricted from doing anything else besides that amount, and I think we should just continue on.
Great. You know, yeah, I think there was a, because, and also four years ago, that's when the McClary decision was coming down, and the change in how the levy was even being perceived, and I think it's true. Four years ago, we said it, and it's still true, we, we don't strive to give a basic education in North Shore. We strive to give an exceptional education in North Shore, and we need the levy to do that. So I'm writing that down in my column, okay? Okay. So for the tech levy, I know for me, it would be helpful to have a little bit more framing conversation before we get into specific numbers. Like, for example, something else, again, I've said many times, we've all said many times, you know, with how technology changes, to me, it doesn't make as much sense to do a line-item conversation like we do around buildings. So in terms of, of what kind of framing would be helpful for people as we process this, I, I don't know if anyone has a different opinion about that, in terms of going to it, in terms of how the Technology Advisory Committee broke it into baseline, right? And then, you know, built from there? That could be a helpful framing, maybe to think about it in categories instead of getting so specific. But I'd, I'd welcome people's thoughts in terms of how to, what factors we want to try to use when we talk about our priorities around technology. And starting with listing a list of priorities is also helpful, too.
What, again, what I did was use our technology parameter, but also our instructional programs parameter, because that, that was the question I was asking, is how does this improve instruction? And so for me, we, we are very clear that we want to provide equitable access to technological curriculum and devices for students. So to me, that drives the, we have to at least maintain, because that meets that one. And then the eliminate obstacles to instructional programs, which is part of P8, what I wrote down just a few minutes ago, was the, was the line about access to learning and removing barriers. So I, for me, that would be the next add-on, is what do we need to remove barriers and access the curriculum? And not get into so much of things, and what things do we need, but how much more do we need to spend so that students have access to curriculum and we've removed those barriers?
We can also do the card do-hickey.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But we don't, we don't have to go in a certain order. I see we missed the card. Can't do this virtually, I'm just saying, I missed it.
I have a question, maybe Alan can answer it. Like, presentation systems, refresh classroom displays, it's 3.8 million, that's under baseline. I'm just kind of curious what, does that come from requests from staff of what they want? I know some staff just anecdotally had gotten new technology they didn't ask for, and they liked the old stuff, you know? So it kind of depends on, you know, who that is and all that, but just where did that number come from? Is it?
That number came from, you started to standardize more across the board. I mean, you started introducing instructional presentation technology, and that's what we've done with cameras, project, and some panels, some interactive, some, panels. Over the last eight years or so, and this is more standardized, bring those into alignment. One of the things we've really heard from, mostly from teachers and from students, was non-standardization of those things in classrooms are a real probit to using those things in classrooms. Because if I'm a teacher who goes to three different classrooms, and I've got different devices in every classroom, it's like, well, I can't learn all of these things. Or I hear from people that, well, the device we've got in this room is really pretty antiquated. I'd love to use it, but I can't count on this device working. So it's more bringing everything up to a standard level. It doesn't mean having the same device in every room, though, because the device I might need in a Eagles classroom versus a cooking classroom, it might be a very different device.
Sure. Okay. That makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Just to restate it for the benefit of folks at home, so the answer was, and next time, I'm going to have Director Hayes hand a microphone. Get ready. Yeah, yeah, but just, so the answer was around standardization, just to standardize devices. Thanks.
Well, I think we, to a certain extent, we, we discussed that already with respect to wanting to maintain the advances that were put in place over the last year or so, and make sure that they're still moving forward, as well as the adaptive technology, which you described. I, I have to admit, I have a, kind of a hard time with this one, not, not knowing a great deal about the details of, of the technology and what is available and what can be done with it. It's hard to, to get my head around a number, you know, to add on to the baseline here. And as we said, it, it's a dynamic thing. I mean, next year, the technology could be completely different, so we don't, we don't know what it will be necessarily. We don't know what kinds of things we will have to bring in and implement and support. So I think what I'm, what I'm struggling to do is come up with, this is the kind of funding that we will need to do that, leaving it sort of open to accommodate changes as we go. I don't know if that's helpful, but that's kind of where I'm.
Part of the processing, right?
I mean, to follow up on that, I mean, I think, personally, I feel comfortable with the process that Alan went through, and the breadth and the width of the diversity of the committee, the hundred-some people, right? Because he did it all online, with some, with, it sounds like a fair amount of experts from the technology sector that work at Microsoft and other places like that, plus students and teachers. And it was, I mean, just from how you explained it, and just looking at your descriptions in the last couple of presentations, it gave me some comfort in that it's been thought through, that, that extra 7 million or so for the reach is, you know, has some real application, like, real-time application. So that helps.
Actually, I, I forget to look at the running total when I'm thinking about this, relative to what we're, what the baseline is. You know, 7 million is an extra 10%, something like that, that we would add on to ensure these extra capabilities.
Well, and to build off of what Sandy was saying earlier, in terms of how to structure this, for me, it works to view it through the lens of the, the policies and the, and the strategic plan. Like, you know, again, to, you know, the, what, in terms of removing barriers, we need adaptive technology. We know we do. We're not able to differentiate to the level we want to today, so we need to grow that capability. You know, in terms of assigning a specific dollar amount to that, I mean, I'd like to think, you know, like, there's ways we can evolve and improve, and even in terms of how we procure technology, that could, you know, always change and shift. And so, you know, restating our commitment to our baseline today, and whether and how much we want to perhaps go above it or not, maybe that's a place to start, unless we want to, you know, and trying to keep us funneling, funneling, closing the funnel, moving down the funnel, so we can get more specific.
Maybe some food for thought. You know, we are involved talking about technology. Technology is going to continue to quickly evolve, excuse me, over time. That's a given. We also live in a tech-heavy environment in our community. And so I think that when we're thinking about technology, it always behooves us to think forward into what kind of experiences can our students have that will help them be prepared for their next step after their, their high school career in North Shore.
That's true. And something else that, you know, I like about the way this is structured, even though we're not approving specific line and items, I do like the transparency involved in talking about how much training and support is necessary in order to make the equipment work. Like, we want to be clear that there's, you can't just buy a device and put it on a teacher's desk and expect it to work correctly. It's not going to do that. So I do like that aspect of it.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. When you look at the overall number, it's, it's a big number, but you think about, not does the stuff work, but how do staff need to learn how to use it?
Right.
And the variety of different ways you can use technology in their different subject matters. So I know that's a lot of, a lot of training, a lot of thought that staff has to, and the time that staff has to put into it, and it takes, it takes resources, for sure.
Yeah, I'll build on that point a little bit. Back, back when we went to visit Apple, that was the beginning of the conversations around one-to-one in districts, and we went and visited some districts, and there, there were problems where there were schools where the device, in classrooms where the devices just sat in a corner, because the staff didn't know how to use them, so they were collecting dust. I think it's really important, especially after the last year and a half, that we clarify that it is not our intent to have students on devices all day, every day, that that is not what we're getting at, that they still will be technology-free for portions of the day, that this is to augment learning. And I just, I just want to make that clear, because I think people are very tired of being on devices, and so.
But at the same time, we had so many teachers assigning homework in Google Docs, and so many students trying to do that on their phone at night to do their homework, right? I'm so glad we're done with those days.
I think it's important, too, to, to remember and remind people that we're not just talking about devices when we're talking about the technology levy. I mean, yes, the, the kids will have a device, but there's this whole infrastructure that needs to also be implemented and supported, and staff needs to be trained on it as well. So there's, there's a lot more that goes into the kids being able to use those devices when they need them. And the teachers, too, do their teaching.
You're thinking, I can tell. You're like, no, I'm, I'm, we're chatting.
Yeah. I mean, just, you know, we're not line itemming anything. I, I think I, I do support the number proposed. I think it's substantially been thought through and supported by a wide variety of community members, and it's been well thought out, I think, overall. And then there's the investment piece of it, you know, there's the, you know, we have to invest, and technology is a great way to invest in, you know, being a progressive district to be able to respond quickly, as we've found out. And you have to have a cushion there of flexibility to be able to, you know, we're talking about where, where does the, with the, the technology changes, but you still have to have the funds to be able to, you know, to adapt quickly. So I think.
So there were a couple of numbers proposed, actually, because you got your baseline, and so what, what number do you have in mind?
The 83, less the, the 900, but didn't have a whole lot of support, it didn't sound like.
Around 82?
Yeah. Was it 83 or something?
Eighty, oh, yeah, the 83, I see.
83, 160. 83, 160 was the running total on the desired, that included baseline plus the seven-ish million for the desired.
Thank you.
I agree with that. I mean, particularly after our instruction tonight on how the numbers work, I don't think it's that much of an increase with respect to the bottom line for our voters either, with adding on that, that amount. Does that make sense? The 83 also, I agree.
83. What are y'all thinking?
I concur with the 83 as well.
Okay. We're going to witness, we actually don't always all agree.
I know.
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with 83. I know that this, this levy makes a huge difference in the rate, and I might prefer to see a little more flexibility with the capital, so I'd kind of like to see it play off. I definitely think more than the baseline to get to that adaptive technology and some of that removing of barriers, but I'm not sure I'm ready to go all the way to 83. And if that, bringing that down a little bit lets us do some more of what we want to do with the capital.
I was about to say the same thing. I was thinking more 78, 80, because I feel like on the capital side, because again, we have to, and again, we'll pencil this in and come back, but on the capital side, we have buildings that aren't at what you might consider baseline yet, right? And so if, if not doing the full list of technology gives us more, again, room in the tax rate, to do more on the capital side, I kind of am reserving that calculation, but did you say 80, Sandy, is where you were thinking?
More than 76, but.
More than 76, not all the way to 80.
Yeah, I guess I'm not getting really stuck on a dollar amount right now, because I want to.
Yep.
See where we're flexing.
I'm going to put 78 to 83 in our column, and we can come back. How's that sound?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts about the technology? There we go. See, we were warming up, now we have, now we get to talk about the most detailed one. See, we were warming up, now we have, now we get to talk about the most detailed one. Yeah, so let's, let's definitely start this one with like factors, priorities, thoughts, strategies. What are y'all thinking about our buildings? This is me letting our brain gears shift.
Maybe I'll kick it off. I appreciate the way that so many different thought people or community members were involved in both the tech process and the capital bonds process. Because of our online access this time, we had much more attendance and I think got really great input from a lot of different folks. I think it was really well done on both committees. And the way that they laid out the needs, I completely agree with. When we look at our list of buildings and their ages, the elementary schools are older in general than the middle schools and the high schools. So I like the fact that this took on a lot of significant work for elementary improvements. I love the addition of a space or two of classrooms and removal of a portable at the sites that are being considered. I think that's great progress. You know, 38% reduction in portables in a four-year bond cycle is, would be tremendous. So I applaud that work. I also acknowledge that the work at Inglemore and, and Leota is, is critical, so I'm glad that came out as well. So just looking at this and the numbers, we asked before, you know, can we handle this many projects in the course of four years? And, you know, Director Ralph acknowledged today that we've got other strategies to be more efficient and have some help, so I feel comfortable about that too. So, you know, and looking at the different rates that have been proposed, Mark pointed out that we could have different collection amounts, really not change the levy rate. So for me, it feels like this is the time to focus on improving a lot of our schools, as many as we think we can handle.
Thanks. Well said.
I agree with that. I think so. Am I, am I there? There we are. Just not up enough. Yes, I, I agree completely. There's a few things. One, with respect to the, the approach to the work here, Director Ralph and her team have put together, it's, I think it's important and important to the community that we're spreading this out across many schools. There are a lot of schools that, that need significant work, and I think it, it does, people are keenly aware of how wonderful North Creek High School is and Ruby Bridges Elementary, and some of the other schools stand out in stark contrast to that. And so giving them some love and attention, I think, is really important. And the more we can do of that, the better, I think, as Director Kogan has, has pointed out. For me, doing away with as many portables as we can, I think, is a priority. And getting as much of the basic repairs and maintenance done as we can in as many schools as we can. Updating some of the buildings, you know, the replacement of, of some, some structures is also, I, I, I think it's all tied in, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see some of that happening.
And I'll go next for mine, just to kind of build, yes, yes, and I, I'm glad, it wasn't clear to me initially that this was a phased approach with Inglemore, and at first I thought, I was worried it was just a modernization, which I, I didn't feel comfortable with. So I'm glad this is a phased approach. I think we can let, once, you know, whatever we decide, it would be good to be a little bit more clear about that. I, I also, I, I, I think that, two other thoughts too, more strategic. I think we have to have a plan for a staging site. And I don't know if we can solve it in this bond because we have such a backlog of maintenance, but there are schools like Shelton View that we just can't improve without a staging site. And I'm, part of me wonders, well, what if we like left an old building at Inglemore that turned into a staging site? I don't know. Like, I, I think we're going to have to get very creative about it because it's, it's, it's something, it's a, it's an issue that other districts have had to tackle as well, and I'm sure there's other strategies on there. But I think long-term, and this is leading into my last point, I think we need a long-term approach to these elementary schools. I think growth may come back after, you know, the next couple of years, and we're still going to have to deal with that. But we also, we, we can't, I feel like we've had repetitive conversations and we've had to adapt to growth, which is absolutely the right thing. But we also have to have a long-term strategy with some of these older, you know, if you go down the scale, again, Shelton View just pops up because that's partly a staging site, that's partly just capacity in the bond. Gosh knows, we can't go, you know, smart financial management aside, we still have a cap on how many elementary schools we can do this time around. So that's just something I want to put out there, and I want to figure out a way to capture it without having, having it kind of lost in the ether, because now we're going to have maybe a lot of projects in the next four years. So how are we going to plan smart for the next step? That's what's on my mind.
Director Cast, for my clarification, if, if nobody else, but also for the audience, could you define a little better what you mean by staging site?
So the idea is, you know, typically when we've done large remodels, we, for instance, built out in the field and then knocked down the old school, and that became the field, right? But, or we've had, you know, space in parking lots or things like that. There are some schools, and it sounds like Maywood almost got that close to not being able to do it well, where, like, there's just some schools, like Shelton View's campus is another really tight campus, where it, in order to have students safely in that building while you're renovating, it's, it's not possible. It's from a student safety standpoint. So then you have another building, sometimes districts use old schools, you know, another building that is a temporary school for a year, and it's, it's not a simple thing to ask a, a community to do, but if it means getting that update to the building, usually you can make it work so students are supported as you do in a temporary location.
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. You know, Treez talked about this before, but I guess the question I think you're getting at, are we, I mean, are we somehow putting ourselves behind the eight ball if we don't do a flex site, a transition site earlier than later? Because like, if you don't do it this bond, then you could build it the next one, but then it's not ready for like eight years down the road, six years down the road. So what are your thoughts on that, Treez?
We talked a lot about a swing site. Well, not a ton, a little bit about a swing site. In some ways, we picked the list based on the low-hanging fruit, kind of the ones that were in most need and that were easiest to accomplish. We have talked about doing a swing site potentially at the Sorenson property and doing it made of modular portables, if you will, because then we can repurpose those to other sites, and they would potentially replace older portables that are maybe not as desirable. So we can set up a temporary thing, and that would enable us to do it in a very timely manner. But since we are going to the voters in February, I think it would behoove us to spend this next cycle really preparing for that. And to your point, Director Cast, about having a plan, we have really been working on a master plan and updating the master plan. It's a 30-year look, and I really look forward to having conversations with you all in the next couple of months about how to prioritize various projects, so that we can do that and then really start building the infrastructure to make any site easier to do.
All right. Is a, is a modular swing site, I guess it depends where you put it, but cost, is that something we can do within, you think, a budget that we already passed, or is that going to have to be tagged onto the next cycle? Let's say we want to do it at the beginning of the next cycle.
Of the 2022 cycle?
Or the, the, the cycle with the following cycle?
Absolutely. We could do it at the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have a few buckets. One is called like small works. That probably wouldn't be adequate to do a whole swing site, but it might get all the planning done for it. So I don't, that's not really an answer, but I would say partial.
Thank you.
And before I, I just want to clarify that when she said Sorenson, she meant the property that was owned by the Sorenson family and not Sorenson, the preschool.
Very good clarification.
Okay.
And, and before you leave, real quick, so, and what, what I'm hearing you saying is, the question was process, but there are so many buildings in need already that why not just go forward with those, and then we'll make a plan for the next?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Turns out that's one of our bullet points in our facility, is that we have a plan.
It is, and we do have a plan, right?
Yes.
We're, we're, yeah, there's different layers to plans, it turns out.
Yeah. So using that, just to build on what's been said, I, I love the Sorenson component and think that's a core early, we've heard that we're turning kids away because we don't have enough space in our early learning, and that just is heartbreaking. And the outdoor playgrounds is such a huge need. We need to take that off of the shoulder of our PTAs to fundraise, to update our playgrounds. So to, to, for me, those are core parts of it and impact every, every household, I think, both of those. I, as an Inglemore parent, very familiar with Inglemore and its needs, so that makes complete sense, as does Leota. And, and then I like the, the work of getting into the elementary schools. I'll be honest, this is my fourth round, and everyone has had a different list of elementary schools that were at the top of the list and the most urgent needs. So I know that that's change in staff and change in state requirements that, that impact that. So, but I certainly can, having spent the first day at Crystal Springs, definitely can see that that needs work, obviously Kenmore Elementary, all of these schools I've spent time at, and have no issues with those being that, and have been at this long enough to cycle through. We had, when I came on, we were in a period of stable enrollment, actually declining enrollment, and so worked on maintenance and renovations of schools. And so that's, that's how this works, that we'll cycle, and it's quite possible in four years we'll be back to focus on growth. And so I just want to make sure that the work that we do now does not put us in a situation where we don't have capacity in our next bond to address a potential growth situation, because we have started some projects that we need to finish. So that would be my biggest concern in terms of need. So again, just staying focused on need, I think the, the Inglemore, Leota, Kenmore, Crystal Springs, Maywood, Sorenson outdoor playgrounds for me are, are core needs that we, we definitely need to ask for. Like I said, I'm still a little confused about Fernwood and why, what has happened there, that we can't just get rid of the portables. But I, I can be persuaded on that. So that's where I'm at.
Just seeing if there was any thought about Fernwood. Well, and let's, and let's remember, for the capital projects, we do, as a board, because they're so long-term, have the ability to rearrange priorities as well as set the dollar ask, right? And so I don't know if we know how many portables are getting used at Fernwood right now or no. If, if we texted a friend or something?
Yes, Dawn texted a friend. And they are currently being used for enrollment, so.
All 17.
That, that is the report.
Thank you. There we go. So that, in a way, could be considered a growth project. So narrowing, I mean, what do you think's easier? Well, yeah, you have another thought?
Yeah, just, I, I'll just wrap my thoughts up. I mean, I think just from learning from my colleagues here that have been here longer than I, and others in the community, the district's done an outstanding job managing its money, especially through hard times, a couple of recessions, some ups and downs in enrollment, and it's done a really amazing job with the, really the lower, kind of, we've always asked the voters for a lower level of capital based compared to a lot of other districts. Great management of money, and I think that's been awesome. But I think now that we've seen some good enrollment pressures, and that's what we're kind of predicting for the future, I, I like the idea of going, starting to turn to ask for additional funds to really take care of the schools that we've managed well, but it's just kind of time, right? It's, we have a lot of schools. I mean, as we see with, they all qualify for help at some level, we just can't do it all at the same time, right?
Right.
So I think it's, it is time to ask for more money than we've asked for in the past to, to get ahead of the curve and to start getting ahead of these needs with HVAC and capacity and healthy classrooms and less portables. So I think it's time to do the larger investment.
I'll just add, any school we don't work on this cycle will be four years older the next go-around, so.
That's true. It's true. So what's easier for people to do? The list of schools before the dollar amount or the dollar amount?
Dollar amount.
Dollar amount.
So, and luckily, we have great information. And any, this is a hard one to kick off, because again, the need is really great. The need is really great.
I have a good question on this, maybe this is a technical question, rate question. What is the difference, I mean, just, I guess we can do, the, the rate can be boiled out down to however you want to structure the bond. So I was just, just curious what the flexibility in that is between the 400 and the 450? Or is it basically negligible on the rate? No. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess you're right. This is very flexible, and I front-load, back-load, but even all those scenarios, the rate is not hugely different.
I just wanted to clarify, because this is a little bit different than what we saw last time. So 375 is everything we discussed minus Fernwood, 400 adds Fernwood in. Is that when I'm?
Make sure I'm looking at the right one too. So the one from today, right?
That's correct. This is the one from today.
I believe that's correct.
Fernwood, 25 million?
Okay.
I know.
Oh, here we go.
First one brings it to 390.
Well, they.
Roughly 390 to 400.
We're not a card dealer.
Yeah.
I think it's a safe bet to say Fernwood takes it to 400. I know the prior presentation had it around 390-ish, but I think for round numbers, looking at 400. Yeah. So 400 this presentation, and that's because? Got it.
So I, to, to Director Cast, so I guess the, the first is, are we just deciding between 375 and 400, or is anyone interested in talking about a higher number?
I think that's what I'm asking, is let's maybe, yeah, let's have that conversation.
I think that's the first decision to make, is is there anyone interested in talking about a number higher than 400?
And then perhaps, based off of that, we can look and see if there's any other prioritizations we want to talk about. Okay.
I would be interested in considering more because the need is. I would be interested in considering more because the need is great, and we've talked about in four years, we may have other challenges. And what we don't do now is just going to be a burden into the future. So, um, when we look at this estimate that Mark provided at 475 with 80 million for the tech levy and the dollar 54 EPNO, the rates are stable with what we're currently paying. So, that seems like, uh, an area where if we wanted to maintain the tax rate, that's available.
My brain just cannot handle.
Yeah.
I get it, I'm not distrusting anyone, but it just seems like such a huge jump in the bond and to have the rates stay this.
David, can you break that down again? Just so, just to keep it all separate. Yeah.
It's on this page.
Yeah, it's right here.
And it says, with 475 for the bond, 475 million, I'll just be more clear, and it says 80 million is the, um, amount for the tech levy and the EPNO, they say is recommended, renewed at four years. So I'm assuming that's at the dollar 54 per, per 100,000. And so that number calculated out to a stable tax rate for our community. And again, I think a lot of it is growth of households and business. There's just a bigger tax base now than there was four years ago.
It does. So I'm, I'm going to be that person. So though it does, it still does add more debt, you're just stretching it out more is what it, what it does. So I, I, I don't know if I'm good with 475, I have to be honest. Um, it, the need is great, but it does, it could, um, relatively speaking, our debt threshold for our total assessed value within the district boundaries is pretty low compared to a lot of other districts. I have to put that out. But again, what, like Bob was saying, we, we've been such careful, so careful about managing our resources. I don't know why, for me, the difference between 450 and 475 just feels like a really big difference. But I can't explain it.
For, just so I can, my head's right, the 475, that includes the 80 million of the tech, and, and that's, and that's just tech and capital bond?
No.
I'm trying to separate these out in my head.
No, it's just capital, that's just.
It's just cap, okay, so that goes.
Right, correct, Mark? That was just capital, yeah.
Okay.
Five three, it says it includes.
Yeah.
EPNO and the.
Oh, includes.
Well, and the total tax rate, the 355 tax rate.
So you're talking about the total ask between levy, tech, capital, 475?
No.
No.
It's the cap, so what, to keep, if we go with the idea of keeping our tax rate stable, we can do that with a 475 bond.
Okay.
An 80 million tech levy and the max in our EPNO.
And we can do the same with a 450 or 400 bond. It just depends on how far out we stretch out the debt and how we structure the repayments. So we could still do that, too.
So I guess I come back to the conversation about what, what kind of room it leaves us four years from now to then add in the other projects that we want to, to do. So if we, we go with 475 now and we're stretching it out further than we normally would, then we have higher debt at that four-year mark, so we wouldn't be able to add in as much new projects.
That's correct.
Without increasing the rate from, from there. Is that right?
That's a question. But what's that pinch? What's the number?
Do we need to ask Mark?
Yes, we need to ask it.
Maybe so.
Yeah, what's, I think we're.
Right, are, are we understanding that correctly?
I try not to chime in unless there's a question.
Thank you.
Yes, it does impact what you can ask for later, but as I said, North Shore is in a very enviable position. You could ask for $700 million today and still have a level tax rate. So it really is a question of what you're going to ask for now versus later versus the next one down the road. And my guess is, uh, you know, everything changes four years from now, we'll know more then, but if the assessed value grows moderately, we try to be conservative in our planning when we do these things, you'd have another sizable chunk you'd be able to do next time around, and it's probably not going to be the constraint of the dollar amount you can ask for. It's going to be more of the projects you can accomplish, as you discussed tonight, and other needs for the district and other priorities. So I didn't help you make that decision by, I'm sorry.
Make sure we have the right information.
Yes, but it does impact, you know, down the road, it'll take your capacity away, but the district has, you're, you're correct, very appropriately managed finances. Debt burden is very low compared to a lot of districts and compared to your debt limit, and compared to your, what I call a practical limit, it's what taxpayers will support, and you're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
The other thing I think about is the, um, relative difference between the amounts that we're, we're talking about. You know, what, if we look at 450, we look at 475, what is the difference in the, the debt burden between those two and/or the rate that we, we would be at between those two? I mean, I, it's, nothing about this is trivial, but, you know, compared to the starting point of 450, um, I'm not sure that going to 475 for what we would be able to do for the schools is.
I'm going to interject. I, how did we go from 400 to 450? I'm, I'm sorry, I must have missed that point, because my last understanding is we were at 400, because that included Fernwood. What, when?
I had just asked, like, what the, if there was a great difference between going to, jump into 450, so I brought, I threw that out there.
Okay, all right.
Somebody said 450.
Okay, 475, so.
The two schools with an extra 50 million.
Yeah, so let me explain where my brain is at. I've got two, two things. One, wanting to make sure that we have capacity for what happens in four years, because I think all signs indicate that we are going to start seeing some growth as we come out of, for many reasons. And I want us to have that capacity, plus we're starting a couple of projects that we're going to want to finish. Um, so I, I would prefer that we pay off at a higher rate so that we have that capacity for years. Also, there is the reality that our last bond passed by 256 votes, and it requires a 60% rather than 50. So there's also the, nothing is an option here, right? And so I'm a little worried about going from a $275 million bond to a $475 million bond, even though the rate doesn't change, that's a big ask visually of our community and that concern. I'm, I'm nervous, I'll be honest, I'm nervous about it, and I just, it's kind of keep us closer to, we've had a nice trajectory of going up almost 100 million every four years. That is kind of how our practice has been. Um, 200 million is big, and, and we've seen those fail around us. So that's my worry.
That's a good point.
It's hard for us to predict, you know, outcomes, right? Um, part of this, I mean, from my perspective, part of this, we have to kind of just, that's what we're doing now. We're talking about priorities and needs, right? Regardless, and we have, regardless of the amount, to a certain degree. If we, if we're comfortable as a board and a district being able to articulate the need to support the amount, I think if we, if we're confident in that, uh, I think we, we can do that. I think it's, we just need to keep that in mind, I think. Um, but whether it's 300 or 328.5, I don't know how much of that different, you know, I mean, you still have to, you still have to defend it. Um, but it is catch point two in a way, right? I guess as part of our job is we have to at least put it out to what our real needs are, thinking about the long term. Like David said, if we don't, I mean, for every school, we'd leave behind another four years. It's just, it's more to have to ask for four years from now, more to have to ask for the next four years, but, um, you know, um, people say no to a number, and we do have the flexibility to go back for a lesser number.
Yeah, I think the, the other difference, again, it was a very close, very close, four years ago. The other is, we've never had a no campaign, and it's happening. We already know that there are people putting together the no campaign, unfortunately. Um, so it's, it's not a slam dunk.
Sure.
I wonder, too, and this is just kind of a wonder, this is the first time I've, I've been through this, this level of it, having just sort of tacked on the end four years ago. But I wonder, when we think about equity and the fact that this bond is going to address a whole lot of schools across the district, if we say, okay, here's, here's where we're stopping this time, when the community knows we have this enormous list of all these things that need to be done, would we get backlash in, in the form of no votes if, you know, we've got a, a large portion of our community that says, well, why isn't my school on there? Why would I vote for it if you're pushing my school off down the road?
That's kind of what I like about this approach, is because the last couple of rounds were brand new shiny schools for just a few, you know, handful of corners of the district. And people were like, you know, and we've had people come to our board meetings over the last four years saying, you know, why isn't my school getting taken care of? And I, I think, just based on anecdotal evidence and the feeling of people out there, I think it's, I think more people are going to support improvements at more schools where their kids are at. I think the support gets spread around. I mean, the dollars get spread around to improving kids' lives in schools and teachers' workforces, and I think, I think there'll be, there's more of a rallying cry around that, I think, in the community with, with, with our proposal than just this new school here or new school there. I just, I have that feeling that it's, people are ready to support.
Well, and.
Support it.
You're going to chime me maybe for this, because I'm going to mess up what I just kind of facilitated. But I'm trying to think of a way to get Wooden Elementary into the list, because then we would have an elementary school in each feeder pattern also, right? So to talk about equity across the district, to improve an elementary school in each feeder and pattern, um, I'm with you, Sandy. I, I'm, I'm very wary of how high to ask, but part of me, I just, I, I just keep looking at that wooden. Um, it would be, it would be lovely to be able to improve a elementary school in each feeder pattern. Um, and I, any of my bright colleagues has a.
What, what does Wooden bring us to?
Well, if, if we didn't complete the Kenmore Elementary replacement, probably 430, I'm guessing, tree, right? Because it's roughly 30 for a, 30 million for a modernization slash, I like calling them remodels, because some people understand that. But it would get us to 430 if we didn't do the, if we passed over the complete, the Kenmore Elementary stop. So it'd be a, it would be a modernization, not a complete renewal of Kenmore, but then we'd also be able to modernize Wooden, which has been on a list, like you've mentioned, for a while.
A long time, yeah. And do we have the capacity to do six schools plus everything?
That was a yes.
That was a nod from our executive.
A nod, yes.
Thought I'd just like to add, too, is, we talk about a variety of factors here in making this decision. One is the dollar amount, the tax rate. But the other one is, um, and the need is clearly that, a big factor. But the other one is our capability of doing work. And if we have the ability to do a volume of projects in this four-year cycle, and we pull back on some of that work, at some point, I mean, can we do as much as we need to do the next time? So I'm just being mindful of that, too. If we've got the capacity to do this work now, there seems to be some sense in getting done what we can't afford to do and time to do now. Like, again, the need, the list is long, so the more we put off, it's just going to be a harder crunch at a future date.
I'm the one, because.
It's okay, it's okay.
Our first one was 177, so this is when I started.
Bread was 25 cents.
Well, and that was only North Creek.
Well, and, and that's, that's what the growth in the area, right? For all, for all the logistical and facilities and all the operational quandaries, the growth gave us, it also gave us the benefit of more assessed value to spread out the cost.
I, I feel very comfortable at 375, I think, and the needs, again, focusing on needs-based, the needs there, I feel very comfortable. Um, I'm kind of wondering if we trade off Fernwood for Wooden. Again, Wooden has been on every bond cycle.
No, it has.
Wooden. Um, and I, I understand the portable concern, but every time it's been brought up as this is a school that really needs it. Um, I can go to 400 and feel comfortable. Again, the needs, I, I can feel very confident about that. I, I don't think I can go to 475. Um, I think that's just too, I'm really worried about this bond, I'll just be honest. And I think that's too big of a jump, even though the rate is all three of them, each measure gets voted on separately, and it's not a difference of 475 or 450 or 430, it's 475 or nothing. And then we have to pay to do another election to, and adjust it, so. I know we're not voting tonight, but I, I'm, I'm comfortable, definitely 375, right around 400, I'm comfortable, much more than that. I, I really just get a pit in my stomach.
So back to Fernwood with the portables. I mean, so are we, it sounds like they're all being used, so I mean, I was hoping there would be some not, so maybe there's, there's additional capacity there. We don't have to address this time around, but any thoughts, Dr. Reed, Audrey, on that?
It does seem counterintuitive that 200 fewer students would require the same number of classrooms, so I would want to do a walkthrough, actually. And I know as a former principal, any space will become used, just because, I mean, that's how we are. So I don't know, but I would want to do a walkthrough and perhaps get you some data back on that. It does seem a little counterintuitive, honestly. The only things I could think about, I do know, probably since we were at the 1,000-ish, we have lowered class sizes K2 somewhat, which might account for a few more rooms being used. I don't know with how many more in terms of 200 or fewer kids, too, right? So it, I would want to do a walkthrough and kind of take a look, see. My guess is probably some of those might not be necessary to be used, but probably a good number would still be used regardless. Again, I'll, I can do a double check. Just doing a walkthrough, or one of the staff will do a walkthrough.
And in, in terms of the need being great, there's still a lot of schools with a lot of portables that aren't, were aren't able to afford in this plan anyways.
Frank Love came up, I know, as a topic of conversation. And also, I believe, Moreland's.
Yeah.
It's been a, a discussion item in terms of, um, the board and some of the conversations around. Moisture, excessive moisture.
Right.
Yeah. So I know, there are no end of projects, which I think the, the team and the committee all took a look at, so for sure.
To your point about the, the four regions, the north has a brand-new elementary and a brand-new high school and a brand-new addition at a middle school, and will likely have a brand-new middle school in the next bond or something, because that's where the growth is. So, um, I, I think I, I have been persuaded that I'd rather see Wooden be brought into this. I feel, I feel bad. It feels like it's been 12 years that we keep talking about Wooden, and then they somehow always get pushed off the list. And I don't know why. Yeah.
Are there any, it's Audrey maybe, any structural considerations if we didn't complete the Kenmore L replacement? I mean, does that have to really happen once you start it?
No, it doesn't have to really happen. I think we are planning for all of the sites that they can either be partial or whole. And it really became an exercise with the different groups. Again, the elementary schools were the one that had the widest array of opinions, et cetera, because there's a lot of data to support all of them. There's a few like Shelton View and Morelands actually that really would benefit from a swing site. And so they kind of moved because the swing site did not become priority. But as far as Woodin or completing, as we get up into those higher ones, right, towards the top of the list, those are the ones that did not have as robust a conversation. And I think that we could definitely talk with the committee about kind of your rationale, which I think is very sound as far as feeder patterns go. I think they were thinking Leota is in that feeder pattern. But I, for sure, when that was in the conversation of potential projects.
The pickle we're in is that the list is gonna be just as long every four years. Right? It really is. It'll be this...
We do have pickles.
Right, so like we're kicking the can down the road. But I know there's real, you have to be realistic too, so. But that's the conundrum we find ourselves in.
Interesting question, and I don't know what to make of it, just as I was thinking. I had a wild idea. I wonder, we keep talking about a swing site and how it has merit for some of these schools that may have some of the more challenging remodels, but maybe most necessary. I was talking to Audrey earlier today, we've completed a large part of the new middle school plan for Malpe, right? We did the phase one work. And I wonder, we didn't get to cost escalation? But I wonder, because that's been so accelerated in the last few years, honestly, like exponentially, more than we might have anticipated. I wonder about the wisdom of moving forward with that, not necessarily because of the middle school numbers right now, but we know they're coming in the future. But maybe that could also function as a swing site and keep our escalation costs down for a future building need on that site. But then on the flip side, then you'd have to really plan your bonds sequentially to think about, well, then those elementaries that have to be flipped, you know? And then the question that makes it sort of like I almost didn't say anything is, can you really use a swing site designed for middle school with elementary kids? You know, so there's some potential flaws, but I wonder, that's a place that we're actually gonna build, right? At some point. And so it wouldn't be a build for loss or not, right? And it might be less expensive to build now than eight years from now out there. Well, we know that's true. I don't know how much, at 6%, I think is what you had originally talked about. And it's about 90 million-ish for the rest of that site to be finished. It's a wonder, right? I don't know, and I don't know where that sits in your thinking about the 375 to 4 to whatever. But if that could function in that dual purpose, it's a wonder, right? I don't know.
I wish it was closer to Morelands and Shelton View.
Right?
Out there.
And that's a fair, fair point. It's just hard to think of a swing site, because if we put up modulators, that's a huge... I mean, I keep thinking back to Innovation Lab, right? We were able to do this building for less than we would have put a bunch of portables on high schools. So there's a trade-off in thinking about it sometimes, so it's a wonder.
Okay, so here's where my brain's at now. Having kind of thought of that, and I know we're trying to get to a first reading, the next...
We're doing okay.
No, I know. So I, like I said, love the Sorenson Outdoor Playgrounds, Inglemore, Leota, and four elementaries. Is kind of where my brain is at, because I was just counting, we got 21 elementaries. Easily 15 of them need work, and we can't do 15. But we can do four comfortably, I think. And so that's, to me, I think we can explain that need. I am open to what those four are and how we decide what those four are. But that, I think for me, that I could be very comfortable with a first reading that expresses those needs.
When you say four elementaries, you're thinking four elementaries at roughly 30 million apiece?
Yes.
In whatever that garners us.
Okay.
I'm just trying to...
Does that maybe be about 430, if I'm doing my napkin right?
Well...
Oh, no, no, that'll be 400, that's right.
400, yeah. And then if we need to do a site or whatever, that adds a little more, but... Leota, Sorenson, outdoor playgrounds.
Yeah, the other...
And then all the, all the other maintenance that's already built in there.
Sandy, I'm looking at the numbers here. And one of the ones that's on the list here is the Kenmore Elementary complete replacement for additional money. So if that got addressed in the baseline recommendation for the partial modernization, then you might be able to add Woodin and get to around 420. Sorry, I didn't mean Woodin, I meant Woodin and Fernwood, get at 420.
Probably get comfortable, I don't want to do somebody else's job. But yeah, I could probably, 425, I'm really not sure I could do much more than that. But that, if that got us five elementary schools, that would be good.
I lost track of that just a little bit.
Yeah, so let's restate that, so I'm writing it in my column, so...
Sorenson, outdoor playgrounds, all the, all the current maintenance that's in there right now for HVACs and roofs and all that. Inglemore, Leota, and then four slash five elementaries.
So, I see, that's tricky for me to follow too. So basically the 375 line down, correct? And then over the 375 line?
Is one more elementary for sure, possibly two, depending on what we do with the Kenmore Elementary.
Okay, so not completing the Kenmore, okay. So basically Fernwood and Woodin, and that might be...
Well, and what I was trying to do is getting out of the committee's work of what those elementaries are and just say, the dollar amount feels right. And that gets us four, maybe five elementaries, because we can't do easily 15. Four to five, that's a nice cycle.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we are to talk specific projects more, we're talking capital bond.
And I, right, what I'm, I don't want to get into the work of the committee as to which are the top four or five. And I think they did that already, and that's probably what I'm gonna hear back. But we've all of a sudden brought Woodin into the conversation, and that made me a little leery. Again, because I keep hearing about Woodin, but it didn't rise to the committee's work as being in that top four or five.
The only, okay, so just dialogues. The only thing I see different is that we would be suggesting not to finish Kenmore, but to move Woodin down in higher priority than Kenmore on this list. And we had been debating Fernwood and Woodin, whether or not. So you're suggesting maybe we could try to have capacity to do both Woodin and Fernwood?
That was David's suggestion.
Okay.
I want to make sure he gets credit.
Okay.
The main idea is if we dial back Kenmore a little bit.
Right.
But we've also brought up Morelands, and we've brought up, a whole lot of schools have been mentioned here. And so that's why I kind of was pulling back from identifying schools.
I don't know if we can do them without a swing site this cycle, though.
Wooden?
Or Morelands and Shelton View.
Didn't sound like a...
I don't, yeah, I don't... Right, am I, I think I'm following correctly? Correct?
Okay.
We are talking like a lot.
We did talk also about the roof at Morelands or the pipes that provide the condensation and the whatever, the attics of Morelands, fixing the water leaking problem. So is that still something we could do? And what would the approximate cost of that be, Audrey? I know the gutters also were an issue during the torrential, they didn't support the...
Yeah, absolutely, that can be one of our building improvement projects, the orange ones. And we are also working to do some property acquisition, as you all know, around there that can make the future project there a little easier. It is by far our most constrained site.
Just a quick question though, if we think about the roofs, the gutters, or however to mitigate the dripping water, it's still a reasonable and prudent expenditure even if we're gonna modernize?
Yes.
Okay, because that's a whole other...
With the age of our buildings, we are going to be doing some of that. We're going to be spending money maintaining buildings that we will then replace, modernize, et cetera, and not the, you know, more quickly than we maybe would like.
And so can you get me a money figure to do sort of what we would call water abatement or moisture abatement, or, you know, like improving that, just so I can make sure the board has that?
Get it for you right now.
Thank you.
And just, I think I know what the answer is, but SCAP will only do after 20, it has to be 25 years without touching. I'm assuming you can replace a roof or fix the leaking pipe and they will, that doesn't trigger that 25 years?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Matching funds, translating.
I want to make sure we're not losing it on our matching.
We want our state matching funds, so, yeah, good question.
Yeah, so...
Thank you, Audrey.
I think you touched on...
2.25 million.
2.25. I think, Audrey, you touched on this already too, but I'm thinking, looking at the list of potential elementary schools to start with partial replacement. And we have four to five different schools with partial replacement. Will these be done in such a way, these partial replacements, that if four years from now we don't manage to pass another bond, that those schools will be fine being only partially replaced? As opposed to, I mean, we don't want to get into something now that necessarily has to continue beyond our four-year mark?
Yeah, 100%, that was the discussion that the committee had about the elementary schools in particular.
Thank you.
Only thing I have to say is, I think the last thing I'd say, I think the needs at 450, and then we can play around with what schools need what, but that's, I would support that. It's a cut to the chase. But, you know, I mean, there's always numbers in between that, but I would be comfortable if, I think we can look at, face the public with a straight face and the needs there. I mean, we're all kind of dancing around the, you know, a school or two needs this or that. That's, that's where I'm at anyway.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite make out the number you threw out there.
450.
450, okay.
We put in all the schools that are on the, on the chart, short of the pool.
Add a comment, I mean, the committee came together and made these recommendations based on priority and need and ranking. And so even though the number is bigger than we did last time when we went up to a bond, the need is there and the community has said, you know, let's spend some focus fixing up some of these older buildings. And so I read that kind of loud and clear. You know, we've talked a lot about the portables as well, we've heard, you know, that is another interest out of the committee. So I think this came from the community as to the priority. So again, I feel like we didn't pick the number, it's kind of coming out of the need.
And where I'm landing is the 425 mark. Because there's, there's a lot of partials here. I would rather prioritize Woodin over completing, a partial at Woodin over completing Kenmore. And that way we match the objective of touching as many schools as possible and spreading out, spreading out the resources as far as possible to try to modernize as many schools as possible. So I'm, I'm landing at the 425, it probably will end up being 430, but we can ask for our final, final dollar. But not do, not completing Kenmore, but putting Woodin there.
I can work with that, because our last was 275, so that's 100 million just to go to 375. 175 million just seems like a huge leap and an ask to our community. I like 400, 425, it's needs-based, it's very clear what the needs are. And if we do the payoff more quickly so that we have the capacity in four years for what we know we're gonna need, I think, I think I can really work with that.
What do we think?
Do I hear?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm not, I mean, I guess, I thought we had the question answered about capacity. There's no capacity issue, right? You know, it's a 475, there's not a capacity pinch. Not that I'm proposing that, but that's...
Oh, what I, what I meant was that the 475 had us paying off the bonds at a slower rate than we currently do. So that would be more debt on the books in four years when we're going out for the next round. So what I'd like to see is us do a 425, 430, but pay off at a higher rate so that we have that capacity in four years for whatever we need.
And I'm, I'm there too.
Would that scenario increase the tax rate?
What I'm hoping is the, in the, taking it down from 47... I'm losing math here, but going from 475 to say 425, that we keep the rate the same and we do it by paying off the bonds a little faster, or very similar to what we...
Yeah, front loading just for this four years, then we have more capacity after that.
And then, and then the rate stays the same.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I hope the term of more capacity is the right one, I think it's less debt on the books. We have, not, we don't have unlimited capacity, but we have, we have a lot less debt on the books than most school districts do. It sounds like, so it's not a capacity issue. It's a, how much debt you want to carry at any given time. But even at 475, or it's, we're not, it's not a huge over-budgeted amount for our school district, but anyway.
Yeah, no.
Good point, good point.
We're very good fiscal stewards, and what I meant by capacity is that rate. That in four years, we're gonna want to be able to keep the rate the same, and that gives us more space in the rate.
In the rate itself, I see.
In the rate itself, yeah.
So just summing up where we're at, but it doesn't mean we're finished, yeah, go.
Director McGurty, what was your, your thoughts? I forgot to write them down.
No, I'm just looking at the potential rate scenario, and I know it's a little bit dated, this is from the last time, but looking at the rates that would result from the bond, this was at the 375, plus technology, plus the operating levy. I mean, we'll, we'll need to take a look at where the rate lands for, for the numbers that we're talking about, because we were saying $1.54 to keep the maintenance levy. And the 83 million was where you landed off of the...
We haven't finished that one off yet, actually. We were gonna go back, we have a rate.
If we have some, some wiggle in there, it becomes a matter of which, what's highest priority.
I'm just curious, Dre, what is the, excuse me, the phase, the next phase of Inglemore going to cost? If we're doing, I'm just thinking of four years from now, if we look to finish Inglemore, what we think that might cost? And if we do the middle school in that same bond, Drew was saying like, we need to think about, those are two major building events which may not leave much room for any other touching remodel projects four years from now, right? Like, so I'm just thinking not just this bond, but what's the next one?
Good question.
And the one after that, how do we stage those so we don't inadvertently create a bond cycle that has really too much on it in terms of a tax burden? So I just, I'm curious, Dre, if you have that, what the, or we potentially leave Inglemore languishing or then the middle school piece, right? Like, so I'm just, I'm curious.
That's exactly what I was getting at of...
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to see if we could add some numbers to it to help us.
So that we can have the capacity to keep the rate the same, but be able to do all the projects that we think are...
We'll need to have a sense of what that capacity needs to be, is what I'm, I've started to think, huh, I wonder what, if it's 90 million now for the middle school, it's going to be 6% on top of that is another 50%. If it's 140 million for that in four years, I'll do that 6% a year, so anyhow, so that's going to be, right? And so then it's like, oh...
And the Yoda, we're going to need to finish the Yoda, right?
Right, true.
Yeah, yeah, so Dre's, Dre's here to help us.
So I do not have the escalated numbers for those projects, but I think with the Inglemore project, we will be just over halfway complete with it. So I would anticipate between 80 and 90 million dollars plus escalation. But again, this is very rough numbers. Leota, I would expect to be about 60,000. So all of the partials that we did were roughly between 50 and 60% of what we would anticipate a total completion to be. So with Leota, you could think of the same amount next bond cycle plus 5% escalation. Same if you chose, and again, I think I would be more than comfortable going to the committee and saying they chose to do a partial Woodin as opposed to a complete Kenmore. But you can think about those also as halfway replaced.
Were you thinking 5% annual escalation? So it would actually be 20% over four years?
Roughly.
Okay.
Probably more, because inflation's going to kick in by that time.
I was going to say, here's...
Thank you, Dre.
Here's where that 30-year plan will, will come in handy, and particularly to show the community, you know, this, this looks like a lot here, but if you look at the, the long-range plan and all of the projects that really need to be done, you know, we're, we're taking it a piece at a time. And I think that's the way we need to do it.
Well, it sounds like in four years, basically, it will be this plus a middle school. Right, it will be completion of...
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. In four years, it'll be basically this, right? The completion of a couple of half-done, or partial-done projects, plus a couple more elementary schools and a middle school, a new middle school. So we will be adding the middle school on to pretty much what we're talking about right now.
Do we know that the middle school capacity will be needed at that, that point, like four, six years from now, roughly?
Well, it's not four years from now, it's...
Well, yeah.
Six, seven years, right?
I think based on the Western study that we heard from, I think, that's something, I mean, we'll know in four, more in four years, but I think there's a good chance we will need it.
One thing, though, I just, across my mind is, you talked about we want to maintain capacity for need into the future, which I think is very wise. But it also reminds me of kind of where we're at today. You know, we were wise in the past, we have capacity for the needs that we see now in the list. And then we have a real issue with the fact that it's significantly more money than four years ago. But I'm just asking, in four years from now, would we might possibly have the same problem where, okay, now the need is this much money and it's much more than last four years? I mean, so it kind of feels like, we said we want to set ourselves up for where we're at today. You know, the ability to make decisions about how to pay for some of these projects that are needed.
Right, no simple answer, right? So the benefit of going to 450 is that we would complete Kenmore, from what I can see, unless, I don't know if there's enough time before our first reading to ask for a reprioritization from the committee. I don't know. Dre's standing again.
I would happy to be do, I would be happy to do a quick email survey of them with some options, if you had some options that you wanted a response from.
Okay, thank you.
Are you saying 450, but reprioritize with the list?
It's on, it's on the table. But if we're not, we haven't finalized, I'm looking at Sandy's face, we haven't finalized 450, but it's still on the table. Yeah.
What was Director McGurty's, what, what, did you throw a number? Sorry, I'm thinking too much in my own head. What was your support for on this list?
I think I was at 450.
Okay, thank you.
I think that it's, if we, if we leave off that 25 million, and I think that things will just become more critical, perhaps go beyond critical in that four years.
What are our districts around us asking for?
Oh, do we know this, what our districts around us have asked for? We can do a quick look.
I should have a, Mark should have.
Let's find out.
I think Mark's looking, looking at...
I think he should have a table, fancy table, I bet.
Do I have it? Is it here in my papers, or?
If you have my presentation information, there's an appendix with some information in there that Dr. Reed thought might be of interest. And in that, probably the last page is the election history of neighboring district, of neighboring...
But I can't see that.
Put it up on the screen. Right here.
Oh, peer district, okay, yeah.
Dr. Reed, could, would it be possible to put that up on the screen?
Anything's possible. I know if you have Word docs on your laptop, you could probably bring it up.
That's true. I'm grabbing it, yeah.
So it's Bellevue and Lake Washington. It's peer district election results, so it's got Lake Washington and Bellevue.
Are those the...
Not for me, I don't know where that came.
It's not that one. I'm lovely planning September 13.
It's Bellevue and Lake Washington.
Yeah, it's the same one, right?
Here.
That's what I said, it was the February.
Or do they end, sure. Wasn't that the same one?
February of '20.
Okay, let's see.
You know, it's okay. Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah, we can, we got it.
Okay.
That's even smaller than my paper for me.
Multiple lines.
Right. And I, and I should have been clear what I was asking for, why I was asking it. Is it's been very effective, again, I am, I am so not comfortable with 450, I'm just going to own it. I was okay with 375, and I feel like I've been adding and adding and adding, and I just can't. Because you look at Lake Washington's and all those bonds that pass, or failed. And they finally got one to pass, and it was at 436. And it's Lake Washington, where they have a much, much lower task tax rate, because they've got Microsoft sitting in the middle of their district. And anyway, so what I was asking is what are other districts around us asking now? Because it has been effective in the past to be able to say, and it is lower than what our neighboring districts are asking for.
I think other districts now are doing what you're doing now. And they're probably in a meeting somewhere in a room with the doors open, asking what are other districts doing right now, so...
Well, it would just be helpful what their, like their ranges are.
I think there was one that passed recently, but I don't remember who it was. Say like in Snohomish County, maybe, or maybe. I also wonder if Bellevue and Lake Washington are the... As much peers as other districts around us might be, I mean, they do have a much, much higher tax base than we do.
The thing to keep in mind, though, some of these districts have had failed bonds, but they're still way ahead of us because they were, as far as their, like, Lake Washington's replaced all their schools, except for two.
Well, but they've done that with capital levies, which we can't, there's several problems with capital levies. One being that we don't have, again, the tax base, so they, they can ask for a large amount of money in a capital levy that we can't do because their rates are so much lower. And a levy, we can't start collecting until the end of April of 2023, whereas a bond, we can start borrowing very shortly after passing. So it would delay all of this by almost a year, over a year, before we could start working on the projects. Yeah, and you can borrow what you need to do the work with a bond, right? The levy, you have to wait for it to come in every six months. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm there yet either with using that practice.
So I'm going to suggest we go back to talking about priorities a bit. And that might, I mean, the fact of the matter is, whether it's 400 or 450, it's still not going to be enough to do all the work that's out there, right? And so talking about our priorities, we might... It's very easy for us to think about the schools, right? And if we need to rejigger schools within a dollar amount as well, we can do that, too. But it's really important that we, we all find a number that we're all comfortable with. It's really, really important. So in terms of, we started with prioritizing touching as many schools as possible, right? Reducing portables, having the ability to address critical maintenance. You know, the Morelands roof has come up. So, and one that came up, you know, is Sandy's concern about passing, right? Having an acceptable threshold for our community that we can pass the bond. So. We can go to a list of schools again, or we can, it seems to me, it seems to me the dollar point is the, more the sticking factor than the list of schools. Because again, there's so many that, that need, I mean, we know we're going to have to face tough decisions there anyways.
I agree. I mean, you can take the scoring list of a variety of different ways, they all qualify, they're all priority. And we're just trying to select a dollar amount that can cover what we think cover the most in this next bond cycle, so. Yeah. I don't think we should spend a ton of time splitting hairs on, you know, the school or that school. I think we can continue the conversation and get some more feedback from the committee on that, but I think it's the dollar amount, really.
And I'm going to try to do some bond research real quick.
I was just going to, to qualify my...
Can you speak a little closer?
I would like to qualify my, my dollar amount. So when I think of this, kind of like, like remodeling my kitchen or, or getting Christmas presents, 450 is what I'd really like. You know, that's, that's marble countertops and lovely tile floors. But I could do it with 425. I'll still get my kitchen remodeled, and I won't bust the budget, if I'm afraid of busting the budget. So again, I'd really love to do 450 if we think we can get it past the voters and if we can keep the rate and the paydown of the bonds in, in check and in budget. With respect to the schools, I think for, for me, I would place a higher priority on doing one more school, even if it's just partial, than in taking one school to completion.
Maybe I'll just add a comment to that, Director McGurty, thank you. And I guess the question I would have to, to Director Ralph is, back to the committee, is Kenmore Elementary Phase Two was prioritized over Woodin. I just would like to ask if we can get some feedback on if those priorities switched, you know, would that be a significant impact to the work at Kenmore, cost more money in the future? I mean, was there some reason why that got prioritized that we should know of as we're talking this out? Thank you.
I appreciate all of the very thoughtful discussion you're having about this with the role that the committee did play, because they did spend substantial amount of time coming up with this prioritization list. I will say, I think that from my perspective and the discussions that I've had with committee members, both in the committee itself and outside the committee, they would be absolutely fine with a partial replacement of Woodin instead of a full replacement of Kenmore. And I'm happy to do an email to confirm that with a little bit of data. Again, they really did care about that geographic distribution. I think with Kenmore, it's just that situation that there's quite a bit of work to do on the inside of Kenmore, right? We talked about the washrooms, et cetera. So they're balancing that out with a whole school replacement so they could handle all of those things versus a partial. But really, you're talking about the very top of their prioritization list, so you're getting to the point where we're talking, when we were scoring, because we had a large committee, so we did groups and scoring, things, you're talking about very small differences. So I, I'm not going to say it was a tie, because it wasn't a tie, but it was very small differences.
I'm letting us sit it with a little silence here, so we're processing at 9:15, so that's, it takes a little longer. So the concern is, I'm summarizing here, trying to find the ability to handle high-needs projects with a dollar figure that will set us up for passage, right? And that's obviously the tension with all these bond measures, for sure, always, right? So I'm trying to think of a, a way of resolving, where we are, we're within, if it's helpful, we're within 5%. Okay, so that's the good news, is that we are really close, right? So 25, we're talking, if I understand this correctly, the difference between 425 and 450, if I understand correctly. So that's about, that's about a 5% difference, so that's, that's good news, right? So we're really close.
Where I get stuck is, it sounds like the rate's the same, though, right? I mean, so, I mean, a person that's worried about voting for a large bond, they're not going to be convinced to vote for the 425 over the 450. I mean, and they're either going to vote against it or not. I think the, I think the clincher is that the rate's relatively the same regardless. You know, some people are looking at, what does it really mean to me on a cost basis? And there's other people who are just going to look, that just don't like to pay taxes, period, and they're not, they're not going to vote for it, regardless of the...
Well, and that is something to think about, is if there's going to be a large difference between the votes, we would get a 425 and 450. I, I mean, we have seen the way it's important to communicate about this, both from an absolute tax bill, from a tax rate perspective, and then explaining how the total dollar amount's going to be managed responsibly, right? And so we will do all of that, for sure. But is the threshold... But is the threshold from 425 to 450, you know, it might, you know, why are things priced $1.99 versus 2, right? I mean, there is some psychological work at play here, a little bit, a little bit. But it's still, it's still a crystal ball factor, right? This is, this is the hard decision. But we are within, my tired brain isn't too far off, about 5%, right? So we're very close.
I think one way of looking at the difference of the 5% difference is an extra elementary school or not. And so I think that kind of comes down to it is how much of a bite do we want to take on now and how much do we want to wait? I look at the building conditions in the elementary schools, and in four years from this bond cycle, Ruby Bridges and Cottage Lake will be the only two that are beyond the 30-year mark. So, you know, four years from now, all of them, whatever gets done here, you know, that'll be the exception. But all of them but two are, are up in the mix right now for needing to be more than 30 years old in the next four-year bond cycle. So I just feel like the need is there.
You know, and I, I, I remember four years ago, too, when we, we took the plunge into one-to-one and right after Sound Transit Taxes, and people are like, what? And it was, it was, it was the right step to take because the need was there, right? And so I have to say, I'm, I'm closer to 450 now, too, as well. I think the need is, the need is great. One more project.
I mean, if we do 450, I mean, we already know we're going to have to ask for the same amount of money next time, at least. Right? I mean, just looking at our list of projects. So what the baseline we set now is going to help us in the future. So that's kind of where my, my brain is, too, with David, how David explained it.
I'm trying to think here. I'm looking for another 25 million.
449.
Trying, trying. That's a lot of projects.
Another thing I might add to, you know, to Director Hayes's point, I mean, it is a big jump from the last bond cycle. The last bond cycle, we did an elementary school, Ruby Bridges. We did the extension at Skyview Canyon Creek. We did the Concert Hall at Inglemore, so three big projects that we worked on. The tally that I'm looking at on the list here is as many as eight schools could be worked on. So it is a jump in money, but it's going from three-site, big projects to, to many more.
I'm going backwards now. I felt like I, I went $50 million more than my comfort level to get to 425. I can't, I, I don't know. I feel like I've given a lot to get to that. I'm still really nervous. And now I'm, I'm actually going backwards. So I, I don't know whether we just need to stop this conversation because this is, I'm, I'm going, I'm now back to 400 is my comfort level. So I, I, whatever is being said is not working to persuade me. And where I'm really stuck is the paying off more slowly to keep the rate because, to what everyone keeps saying is in four years, we're going to have as much need in maintenance and, and renovation, plus likely another school. We, we can't do, to keep our rate, we can't pay off this bond more slowly. We have to pay it off at the rate that we usually do. I can't, can't do that consciously to whoever will be sitting in these shares four years from now, is limit their ability to maintain the rate and do all the work that is going to need to be done. So.
I'm trying to think about this. Okay, so the, the fact of the matter is, we don't have enough resources to do, right? Reasonably. So I'm looking at the elementaries proposed, okay? And so what I've seen in terms of listening to all the input, the, the, the two projects that seem to make up a delta, completing Kenmore's replacement or doing Fernwood. And so trying to keep an elementary project in each feeder pattern, you know, the, Kenmore is the only Inglemore feeder pattern elementary school, but in terms of doing the complete or not, right? Like, I'm, I'm trying to think of other ways we can process this decision, right? But in terms of both Crystal Springs and Fernwood, you know, and Maywood is obviously, and Buffalo, so. We have, we have, yeah, we have to figure out a way to find a number we're all comfortable with. It's, it's really, really, really important. I'm trying to think of other lenses we could look to make, make a difficult decision. So looking through feeder patterns. I'm looking at other options on the list. I mean, Sorenson isn't a complete 30 million, so that doesn't, even if we wanted to, I'm not saying we want to. I'm looking at the other options here. Outdoor learning. And the condition improvements, the tier-one condition improvements, that's things like Morland's roof would fall in that category there. So. We can, we do have the option of, we have extra time in this, we could push out and have another study session. I'm not board president here scheduling all the, all the meetings, but if we can't come to an agreement tonight, we can get more research and come back in two weeks. It's an option.
What does Sandy Hayes think? She has the most questions on this at this point. So, I mean, does that help or not help, or are you?
I, I will be more comfortable going up over that $400 or 400 million if I can see what our possibilities are to maintain a rate in four years and what that allows us to do. When we're, so that we're paying things off, right? I just, I, I highly doubt there's anything that's going to get me to 475. And I'm, I'm just going to need to, I'm already, my stomach is in knots. I'm really, I want to go up at the idea. I'm serious, at 450. I mean, I really am nauseous at the idea of 450. It just freaks me out that that's going to be hard. And I really am concerned that once it's that car dealer that we put that four out there, and that's such a big, we had a two, that psychology of that, I'm really worried about it. Because again, it's not the difference between 450 and 425, it's the difference between 450 and nothing if this doesn't pass. So.
Is there any additional information that Mark can tell us tonight that would shed some light on that?
Well, I guess how much that paying off more slowly at 475, what if we pay it off at the same rate that we normally pay our bonds off at? What, where, and keeping the rate the same, what does that, what is that dollar amount?
So do we want to look at just 475? Do we want to look at 430, 450, 4, what do we?
I think we're at 450 at the high end, weren't we?
I think, yeah, I don't, I didn't hear 4, unless I missed something.
To Sandy's point, if we talk about the traditional payoff rate, if that's like a 20-year bond cycle, you know, and we talk about, well, if we keep the rate the same and have this dollar amount, let's say it's X, and it's 22 years or 28 years or whatever is to pay that off, I think I would like to know that number. If we keep the rate the same, keep the payoff time term the same, how much money is that on today's value in the district? And it might be, I don't know, whatever the X is, I just don't know. But I think that would help us understand like to like.
Okay.
Mark's going to come up to the microphone here and talk about this.
If that to be 430, I will feel much more comfortable with that.
So for, it, it sounds like the difference in 425 and 450, just to throw out there, as far as your capacity to do something down the road, it's honestly going to be negligible for the difference between those two. And the reason I say that is that in running a lot of these calculations, we've run many, many scenarios over the last month or so. $25 million in tax rate equates to 2 to 3 cents per thousand. We've got more than that. We're, we're conservative in our estimates in, in all of these things. So I'd be confident that by the time we get out down the road, that that's probably not going to be the decision factor. It's, I, you know, not to editorialize, it's probably more of what are you, what are you comfortable asking for as a board than it is, you know, to try and justify it for the rate and the ability to go forward. So I think it's, it's such a small difference, $25 million. It's a lot of money, but compared to the overall tax base and the debt that the district has outstanding, we could easily structure it to make sure that the capacity would be the same. And I think, you know, when I started, I said we had two, two decisions to make, you know, for directions from, to, to the finance team from you. Is one is, what are the priorities and what do you want to ask for? And then how do you want to structure the tax rate? So I think we've got clarity on the structuring the tax rates, kind of keeping that up so you maintain the capacity going forward. And it's probably comes down to just you as a board, you know, what you're, what you're comfortable asking for, more than, more than the tax rate side of things, I suppose.
So let me, let me throw out another idea here, too. Yeah, thank you.
Questions, Mark? Any nuance to that, wonderings?
If I might, I don't know if, you know, I've got about four hours to, to get home. If it's not, I'm, I'm happy to stay.
Oh.
If you feel.
Oh, gosh, no, I had no idea.
Vancouver.
Oh, really?
Oh, my gosh!
I'm sorry.
But no, I don't mean, no, I'm happy to stay.
No, no, please.
But it just seemed like a discussion kind of more about.
Yes, we can email you.
You can email, yeah.
Dr. Reed, is that okay with you? Okay.
We really appreciate that. We owe you one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Drive safe.
So I, I can't get to a 450 without having, having to walk away. I was not mentally prepared to go up that high tonight, and I would need time to walk away. I can walk away tonight at 425 and feel very good about the needs that we are addressing at 425. But I, I'm just saying, staying here for another hour to try to persuade me to get to 450 is not going to be an effective use of anybody's time.
So you've seen your people on process. So we have a first reading, and we have to establish a number, or numbers for a first reading?
We have to, for first reading, it has to be the actual proposal that we're going to be bringing to the public, which at this point, we won't have ready in two weeks. It sounds like we need another study session to complete our conversation. And then another board meeting out from that is when we'd be ready for our first reading. If we, if we want to pause, get more information, and then go from there.
We maybe narrow our task. I know we sort of identified, not sort of, we, I feel like I heard some consensus building around the EPNO levy.
Yes.
And perhaps if we could go back to the technology levy, and I wonder if we could get some consensus so that when we return, we have simply this, or if there's more information, I need to ask staff to provide for the technology levy. I need to know what that is now to be able to get to a consensus sooner. So maybe we could slide back to that, Director Caff.
Yeah, I know, I think, no, absolutely. So, because we have the range 78 to 83, I'm going to just throw out 80, right? I don't, I don't think we should maximize the tech levy when we have such concern on the capital side. That's, that's me. So any, any thoughts about the tech levy?
I could support 80.
I think 80 is a good compromise, yeah.
Okay, so I got 80 on the tech levy. Okay, so then the capital bond question is, the, the debt level, I want to make sure I'm capturing this right, the debt level difference. And if we want to look at 400 as well, too, 400, 425, 450, right? And see how, if, if we're maintaining the rate, see how that plays out differently over time. So that in four years, am I capturing the question correctly? So that in four years, we know what the difference is as we plan to complete all these replacement projects. It is, I mean, with, with the majority of the, except for perhaps Kenmore, with most of the projects being a partial replacement, we have to plan for four years from now. Am I capturing correctly?
Yeah, and, and I'm, I guess I was taken by surprise of a 28-year payoff of a loan as opposed to the 20-year that we've always done.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm really, really struggling with that idea of all of a sudden changing our practice and increasing our loan payouts. I think that, I'm worried about that in the future, that that could create problems for us. And I, I haven't been persuaded that that's a practice we need to start doing. If we hadn't been able to pass a bond and we finally were able to, or we just didn't have the capacity and that's the only way we could make this work. So I would like to hear our rates and our numbers based on a 20-year bond payout. Or evidence of why we need to move to a longer payout, not just because it builds more capacity, but what the argument is for that.
And then also, I think the last bit of information we were looking for was in terms of, I know there were a few bonds that went out in April and August, just so we can see in the COVID era, what bond passage rates would look like, if we can do some research on that to get some feel for that.
I'll ask Tracy Patterson.
Yeah, great.
And I don't know what's, and I realize I'm the problem one, but if we want to reschedule, I, I just need time to sleep on this.
Well, and I, I.
Really was taken by surprise that we were going to go up that much.
And there, and there are significant questions open, so I don't think apologies are necessary.
Well, where I was going was that if we want to reschedule, we want to have a study session so that we can have this as a first reading at our next meeting, I am okay with that.
Yeah, we don't need to wait very long to.
That's true.
Answers to our questions are pretty straightforward.
Okay, so maybe, based on how long it will take to get the information together, if we can look at options for meeting again before two weeks from now?
So I need to be clear about, I understand the 20 versus 28-year, the evidence. What other information than that are you requiring or requesting?
So also looking at the levels of 400. So, also looking at the levels of 400, 425, and 450.
What about those levels?
So, what's the impact on the, the capacity debt level you're correcting me again in four years from now, right? Because the bar graph shows that they change depending on, I know they're very tiny, but this, this thing here, in terms of how, if we are trying to maintain the same tax rate, what it does four years out, eight years out, so that we understand what we're setting up to, the debt level to complete the projects, if I'm capturing correctly.
Okay.
Okay.
And the calculation's just at the tax, at the bond payoff rate we've been doing traditionally? We don't want to extend it, just what we've been doing out of those factors.
20. What does that do to the rate at 20 years versus what they propose?
So, do you want any kind of information about facilities between the 400, 425, and 450? Or is it, because what I'm hearing are questions really just about the financing side.
I, I feel comfortable, I could be convinced that we need 15 schools that we've got to get going on, right? So, to me, it's not the need, it's how many can we get to in this bond cycle?
So, we're not looking at project-specific information to answer the question?
So, it's just the finance questions?
Just the finance question, and other successes, you know, just how other districts have done with their bonds recently.
So, I'm just going to push a little on this, because we need to also know how long to schedule the next study session for. If we have answers that are adequate for 400, 425, 450, for example, do you, as a, do you feel like you can get to consensus on the schools and projects that you are interested in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no issues on the schools. Like I said, I, you could convince me tonight that we have 15 elementary schools that needed to get addressed, what I can't, again, I came in at 375 thinking, okay, that seems reasonable, and all of a sudden, it's a $75 million bump, and I, my brain is just not ready to internalize that.
I understand that. So, I, a wonder I have is, can I capture your thinking tonight on, if you went to 400, finances aside, what are you thinking of touching? If you went to 425, finances aside, what are you thinking about touching? And if you went to 450, finances aside, because that will make our next meeting, I think, less time-consuming if you kind of have a consensus, because then it's really the financial questions that get us one place or the other, but we don't need to do both. And I think we can maybe use our remaining time this evening to think about those projects. So, would that be reasonable?
Yeah, for sure.
So, where, what would you think you would touch at 400?
Can I make a proposal? That what I would propose is that, if we're looking at the chart, wooden would bump down to where Fernwood is, and then push Fernwood and completing Kenmore up. So, at the 400 level, we would just put wood in there where Fernwood is, and then Fernwood would be now at the 425, 430 level, and then completing Kenmore would be at the 450 level. That's my proposal.
Sounds great.
What's at 400? Is that what you said? What's at 400?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, we would put wood in at 400 instead of Fernwood, and then Fernwood would bump up to that 425, 430, and then, and we probably should call it correctly and see if it's 430 instead of 425, so we really know what, right? Really get that correct. And then, completing Kenmore would be up at the 450.
So, the 400 is wooden instead of Fernwood? And a partial Kenmore?
Yes.
Thank you, Director Cast, that was helpful.
Is there some consensus around that?
Yeah.
Well, then, so, our next meeting then is really about, yeah, we got really a lot closer than we thought. Our next meeting then is really about then thinking about what these finance structuring questions are, and then it will become clearer. Okay.
Can I ask one question before we leave? Because I think that's important. So, the 28 years, I didn't hear that, and the third slide says 21 is the maximum.
I told Mark, I should have kept him.
Yeah, that's, that's what Mark...
Did he say 28? Okay, so maybe, maybe...
I did say 28, but I was just throwing out just an example, because I wasn't sure, when it said, "We can structure the bonds any way you want," I wasn't sure how long they were structured.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll just verify.
Well, let's verify that.
The 28 seems a little...
That'd be odd.
Odd, but anyhow, I will, easy enough to check.
Right?
And we can take care of that.
Yeah. I think he might have thrown out as an example that you can structure it any way you want, but I don't know if they were proposing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's just verify that, though, important question.
Right.
He's got a four-hour drive, we can probably catch him. Catch him off the phone. No, we can, he can wait till more, tomorrow. Give him some sleep. Okay, well, that all sounds good. Good structure, good narrowing.
All right, any other information we need before? And then, obviously, we'll check in with calendar, so it depends how long it'll take people to, to get information together, and then see when we can, if we can meet again before the next board meeting.
I, I would feel pretty confident by Wednesday, we could have the questions you've asked answered, and maybe sooner, I could send it to you in writing. So, do you want Shavon to ping your schedules?
That'd be great.
To see about gathering? You prefer this week? I think if we have to start writing a resolution, it needs to be this week.
Get those answers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, anything else?
No, anything else from you folks? I just want to thank everyone for being here, community members over there, and staff for hanging in there with us, and all of you for all the information and being patient with us, and I want to especially thank Director Cast for helping us corral our thoughts, and there's a lot of information and thinking that goes on here, so we really appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Reed, too.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.